Mary, this is Dawn in the boardroom. Can you confirm you can hear me?
I could hear you, Dawn.
Thank you, Nathan.
Good afternoon, the boardroom.
Good afternoon, Anne. We can hear you.
Harley, can you hear me? Harley, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Anne.
Okay, I hear you now, too. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Call the Board of Supervisors in the session. And we'll start with budget work session with facilities. Chris Schroeder and Stella Rendy.
Good afternoon. Everybody can hear me all right? I got a little frog in my throat today, so. This is it. Go ahead. Page two, please. Cover a couple of things and review some of the changes we made. We've taken Farley's shop into Drango shop into the facilities maintenance program. We completed a large LED lighting project in Drango shop. Did the Farley shop HVAC upgrade, so now they have controllable heat and air conditioning in the restrooms and in the break room, which they didn't have before also was electric baseboard heat, which was causing massive problems. We're, I'm in the process of working on HVAC upgrade for the Drango shop. Trying to get the right equipment to do what we need in that building. We upgraded in conjunction with the LED lighting project here in the courthouse. We upgraded the lighting in the rotunda dome at the top on the third floor above the elevator. We've added can lights and a ceiling fan to the third floor stair landing, increased airflow. It is an LED UVC light on top of it to help kill anything that's in the air. We upgraded the courthouse primary exhaust fan. Now we have some better airflow in the building. It's not wonderful, but it's better than what it was. We did some work down in the shop and up in the, in the attic area for making prep for courthouse, an old jail HVAC upgrade if we move forward that with the ARPA. If not, we'll use it for the additional storage that we're currently using it for. Little project that was a big deal for the guys out at the shop. We moved the soda ice machine out of the shop break room because the equipment was running and air conditioning couldn't keep up. It was too much of a heat load, so that's out of there. Right now, the current projects we have going, common spaces, painting project. Expected completion is the first part of March, coming along very well. We're at about 75% on the LED lighting project. We have all the materials on hand. We're hammering away at it right now. Jeremy's been working second shift to get the stuff done where and affecting the office spaces. Expected completion is May, June of '22. Courthouse garden repairs. This is something that we came up with. We have the gardens that are attached to the outside of the courthouse. And what's happening is, is over the years, they've been filled more and more with, with mulch and things like that.
What's the garden? Where's the garden?
Around the court, the ones around, physically around the courthouse.
Like the landscaping?
Not the landscaping. These are the actual gardens. The landscaping is a little bit different.
Where are the gardens at?
Yeah, there's.
And the box is. Natoes? What are we talking about? Corn?
They're, they're just square gardens out there that are, most of them are in the insets of the building. You have, you have one, two, three, three of them? Four. Yeah.
Six gardens?
Yeah, that are just around the courthouse. The, the issue we've had with those is.
What grows in there? All right. What grows?
Right now, nothing.
Okay.
We have bought.
I know right now.
No, but no, but I mean, right now, we've, we've, we've taken everything out of there because of some of the problems we're having. We have bought pots so we can pot plants to plant in there when we move forward. The issue with the gardens is, is they've gotten so full that when you get a bunch of moisture in there, it actually starts leaking through the first four walls into the courthouse. So we gotta dig them out. They gotta go down about 36 inches. Reseal the walls and then we'll backfill them up to ground level, not all the way up to where they were filled before. And then we can put pots in there if one of the departments outside their windows want to plant some plants in there for that, we can do that and just, you know, take them out in the fall. Then we don't have to worry about the weeds. We don't have to worry about the other things. That's gonna be a spring and early summer project. The other part is the green space areas around the, the parking lot here and next door at Hendrix. We've got some work to do out there to make them a better green space and make it easier to take care of. So I've been working with Brian on that. Big window cleaning project this year is inside and out, all the windows, July, August timeframe. I'll go for bids here in the next month. And then the other project that I've been working on for the last probably eight months is West Campus landscaping around the office space out there, working with a couple of different groups. Iowa State Extension and stuff, trying to figure out what we can put in there that is gonna be compatible and is not gonna be an invasive species. It's gonna be minimal maintenance, but add to the look of the building out there. Right now, it's just grass and dirt. We need to do something to bring that up. Scheduled projects, and it goes into courthouse raised gardens. We talked about that one. We have some sidewalk repairs to do around the courthouse, the old jail and Hendrix parking lot. We've got some areas where the, the blocks have heaved a little bit and we need to get those trimmed down. We have enough concrete that we can trim them down to make them flush, so we don't have to worry about impaling ourselves or pushing snow with a shovel or running equipment over it and getting it jammed up. The front courthouse balcony, which is where the two stairs come up in the front of the courthouse. That balcony area up there needs to be prepped and painted. That'll get done late spring, early to midsummer. Old jail A Street steps. We've had some cracks in there and the epoxy is starting to separate from the concrete. That'll get done in the spring. We've already contracted that. They'll go in, they'll clean, take all the epoxy off, clean the concrete up and then reepoxy it. Then we talked about parking lot garden repairs. That'll be, I'll be working with Brian with some of that. And then also with our landscaping company to see what they, what they can recommend. The salt's not gonna kill. That's the single biggest issue. Soon as the salt gets in there, the only thing that really grows is weeds. West Campus landscaping project is scheduled for this year. And then one of the things we're trying to do here in the courthouse, these hanging exit lights. One, they're too high. They aren't where they're supposed to be and the light intensity doesn't meet the requirements for safety aggressive buildings. And that's one of the projects where we started working on, trying to find the best way to do it and get the lighting we need with battery backup. So if we do lose power, we have light, you can see the exit lights. ARPA projects. Currently, we have two at this point, courthouse and historic jail HVAC upgrades and cleaning equipment upgrades. I had talked with a couple of, I talked with Dawn and talked with Kevin. I went ahead and ordered the bottle fillers so we can get, get water back in the building, get rid of the drinking fountains that are a major health issue, to be blunt about it. And it'll also, we'll get rid of any of them that have bubblers and they'll strictly be bottle fill stations. Those should be done here and then they're supposed to be arriving here sometime in March and we'll knock those out pretty quick after that. I'll start with the cleaning equipment. It's a little bit smaller batch of paper. What we're trying to go to is higher end HEPA. Battery operated, so we don't have cords stretched all over. One of the problems we're having with a lot of our corded equipment, it just can't reach places or it reaches someplace and then you have to go back down the stairs or up the stairs, move the plug and try and get things done. The fact that they're HEPA, the high-end HEPA picks up and stops a lot of the contaminants we currently have in the building and makes it a safer environment for people with breathing issues or anything else. As well as replacing, getting additional floor scrubber to stay on top of all the hard floors. Let's see what else I have here. This is one of the projects that's fully scalable. We could buy one or two units or we could just get everything and be done with it. We're looking at three backpack battery backpack vacuums. Another compact scrubber and then protein proforce HEPA operate, another HEPA operate vacuum for one of the other locations outside of the courthouse and old jail. Any questions on that one? Now comes, now comes, now comes the one that's a doctoral thesis. Old jail HVAC upgrades. One of the things we've had with the one that was done back in 2016 is we have had some issues with reliability. We've had some issues with, primarily issues with noise. Those things turn on and they're pushing out anywhere from 60 to 68 decibels. That's louder than I'm currently talking and it's because it's a white noise. It causes all kinds of issues with people hearing. And if you have any hearing, hearing problems, you can't hear what's going on around you. Doing this, going to the VRV or VRF system. We had, I'd sent out a lot of information, but basically what it is, is it's the same type of system we put in out at the West Campus. It'll still be, it'll be a water coil. We have the pumping up well and everything to, to move the water with. So it'll be a matter of changing these out to a box that has refrigerant going to it. That'll heater cool, as you said, it with the thermostat and it's only about 32 decibels. They run pretty much, they speed cycles up and down and refrigerant flow cycles up and down. And what it does, it gives you a finite control. The temperature doesn't fluctuate dramatically, highs and lows unless you choose to turn things off or you crank thermostats up and down. And it's also is much more efficient than what we currently have. There's one set of compressors and then there's a couple of boxes that direct the refrigerant to the individual locations. And that's how the temperature is controlled. We, the system out at the West Campus worked great. No noise or noise is very minimized. Temperature is stable all the time in those locations with it. Other than a few hiccups we've had, I think we've resolved all those, the, the minor problems that were going on out there. The newer technology is even more energy efficient than what we put in out at the West Campus.
What's the cost on that?
Well, if we, let me pull my notes here. If we do the whole thing, it's gonna be a little over $2 million. If we do just the courthouse. I take that back. Whole project, if we just do the jail, it's about $350,000 to $375,000. Courthouse is about 11, 1.1, 1.2 million dollars. It's gonna vary a little bit depending on if we decide to do it all at once or if we decide to do one building first and then do the other building. We've had, some of these prices are probably going to be off anywhere from eight to 10% because of the price increases we've had since I put this package together. One of the things we'd be doing with it is using bipolar ionization. Basically what it does, it creates positive, negative ions in the air. What that does is that one attracts dust and dirt. It kills mold spores. It kills viruses and it kills bacteria. And if it's done in the ducting and stuff, it, with the constant research air and it's running, it'll make a big difference in how clean the building stays with dust, accumulated dust. And it's, all the studies, I just did one last week, went through the whole thing. The numbers are incredible, what it does to kill the mold and kill bacteria and viruses. And it's very, very efficient. You don't have much of anything to do with it once it's turned on. Whereas the UVC lighting, you have to replace bulbs eventually. And they do drop down in efficiency where the bipolar does not. It can be installed in a unit like this, a console unit or ducted units. It's not a problem. You can get the little ones for your house to put in your furnace at your house if you choose to do that. That's, unless there's other questions, that's really all I have for that. I didn't want to get too deep in the weeds.
What's, what would your assessment be the current state of play short of the noise related to the existing HVAC in the courthouse? I know we had problems with some of the fragments coming out, but what, what's the, short of the noise, how are they functioning?
Overall, I'd say fair to Midland, to be blunt. We still have some issues with control boards. We still have some issues with refrigerant loss, which you have, especially in each of these individual units. They have a very, very small amount of refrigerant, so it, one little itty bitty wispy leak will cause them to malfunction. Beyond that, I think we go through probably one or two, maybe three boards a quarter right now, control board, something like that, you know? So we're, yeah, so we're looking at, you know, you look at 300 and some dollars for a board and then, you know, a hundred dollars for a technician to do the, to install the board and then go through and double check to make sure the refrigerant levels are right and everything else.
And these are what, five years old?
Yeah, roughly.
There they go, right on cue.
Yep. Everybody's gonna not be able to hear anything.
Obviously, the noise is an issue. But there's also discussion on, you know, space needs that we're going through, so it may not be an issue. But I'm sure it was quite expensive to put these units in.
About $700,000, roughly.
Five years early isn't that long, so.
No, it's not.
Anne?
Thank you. I think that the issues are crippling for the legal system, for the court side of the building. I, we spoke about this last year and I think I spoke about that the year before that, so. This, our system does not function at all for the court system. And the reason I think it hasn't been raised to us over the last two years is at least not as actively or maybe to all of us or maybe in public is because the court system has not been operating in person because of COVID. So, you know, but it is a, I think the system is a, what did you say, fair to Midland, Chris? Isn't that your words?
That's what I would say.
Right, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't give them a C. I think they're, they're not C. They're below performance function and have been in three years that I've been a supervisor. I don't know how we came up with that system in 2016, but I want to use the same words of caution about our, our, our moving to a new system. I appreciate the 66 pages of attachment, but I didn't read it. I'm not capable of reading. You know, I began and it's just, I'm not in the HVAC industry, so I think we need to get high level engineering help to help us analyze what can we do? Now, I understand, Chris, you talked about it being good and it's working well in the West Side campus, but obviously that's brand new engineered building, prepared for the heating and HVAC system that we have in there. I don't know that we have any assurance that using that kind of equipment would work for a courthouse, an old historic courthouse. And you know, we've, we did some changes when we did the courtroom on the first floor. And my understanding from talking to the magistrates, and this was some months ago, is that they think it's working pretty well. Chris, you and I were down there together. So I'm surprised that we're not exploring using that kind of system inside the courtrooms, you know, regardless of space needs, we're not intending to move the courtrooms, so we, you know, they probably should be a high priority for us so that, you know, we're not, so that we're helping and assisting the administration of justice. So that's, I guess my question's about that. I'm not sure we have all the answers before us. I appreciate your ARPA presentation, but you know, I have, I'd ask you to do some more work about, about that so that we don't make a large mistake and get the wrong equipment. So I don't know, Chris, if I have other comments or questions on other parts of your presentation, but do you want to address any of those issues I raise?
Yes, I can do that. One of the pages that everybody originally got broke out, how these units would, how these units would be set up. The majority of the console units would go away. We have space in the ceilings to be able to put ceiling mounted, ducted. ducted units in to be able to move the air around and again, cut down on the air noise and the compressor noise. That would work in almost any location in the courthouse with the exception of the ones that have the hard ceilings. Some of the corner or smaller offices, we would just downsize to a smaller console unit with the VRF system. Otherwise, if we go just to replace one of these units with a similar type of machine, we're going to have either an incredibly high cost of minimized noise or going to still be dealing with noise. The goal with getting rid of the consoles and putting it up in the ceiling would eliminate ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the current noise we have right now, if not more.
Who's told you that? I mean, what is the outside verification that, that that's, that that's true and accurate and can be, you know, retrofitted into this courthouse?
The, the system, the VRF system, I can give it, I'll try and do it nuts and bolts explanation. It's not going to be overly involved. Basically, you have a condensing unit similar to what you would have outside your house for your air conditioner at your house. You would have a branch box, which would take all the refrigerant that's sent out of that machine to the branch box. The branch box would then send the refrigerant to a ceiling or ceiling unit or two ceiling units here in the boardroom as an example. It would heat or cool depending on what the thermostat's set at. It'd be we won't have water lines running through the entire building like we currently have. We would be actually getting rid of some equipment, which would cut down on the electric bill. The system is designed to be used in new construction or old construction because alls you have to do is run, you know, half inch or three quarter inch refrigerant lines from the, from the boxes to the given locations where you're going to use it. Part of the original design was is for retrofits. When you build it in.
We used a retrofit design for a brand new building at West Campus? That can't be accurate.
No, no, that was original design out there. That's, we have the ground coils and everything else out there. So the only difference between the system there and the system we put in here would be how we would get, you know, basically have the condensing units move the heat in and out.
In your ARPA request, answer the number, letter eight F is who's going to be responsible performing the work and achieving the project goals? Licensed mechanical engineer, HVAC contractor, electrical contractor, those are the people I need to hear from. I need to hear from experts in this industry helping me, that's my opinion, select the system that's going to make these, going, going to make this actually be a correct fix and fit. So that's what I would say is the further work needed to inform me about this project. I also wonder why it's not, I understand we're using ARPA funds and, and such, but this to me is has become a maintenance issue and probably always was a maintenance issue. So getting this on a schedule, whatever we finally select that we can absorb through maintenance over time, I think might be helpful as well. We could absorb this cost. I'd like to have an analysis of the performance of the HVAC system in the courtroom on first floor. So those are my questions and comments about that regarding the other issues you present. I didn't see anything in your presentation about an enclosure for the equipment outside of the courthouse shop area that you have. You showed me space where you'd like to, in the budget, put up some kind of an enclosure that would be painted to match the courthouse. Did that project, is that in your budget and I just don't see it as part of your presentation?
It's not in the budget as of yet. I'm in the process of working with somebody to come up with a, a design build option that at this point, I was looking at a ten to twelve thousand dollar project, waiting for the design build information to make sure that it'll match the exterior of the courthouse, won't be an issue with how it looks. And that's the biggest thing we're looking at right now.
Did you talk to my colleagues about this? Have you shown them the space of, of what we were thinking?
Well, I know we, you and I had talked about it a year, year and a half ago.
I don't think I've ever seen anything like. I have very little interest in putting a shed outside a multi-million dollar courthouse that we spend a lot of time and energy making historically nice. So I would be not real interested.
It's actually, Jay, and that's why I wondered if Chris took you, it's not a shed. It's, and so we, we had this conversation last year and it fell apart because it's not a shed. It needs to be. Chris, I don't think it's something that, that we are going to approve if you don't come bring it to us with either a field trip or photos or some kind of explanation because it's not, it's hard to visualize what you're talking about, but then when you go down and you see it and you're like, yeah, well, I wonder why it's not already there and being done. So with the West Side campus landscape, couldn't we not do something featuring Moing to Monarchs? That hillside would just be an absolutely amazing space to showcase what conservation is doing. Some of my friends on social media are all very excited that they've been chosen to be part of the new Moing to Monarchs program in the next season. So I wonder, you know, is that something you've talked to Brian Preston about?
Yes, it is. That's one of the things we've talked about out there. Moing to Monarchs Prairie. We already have Prairie seating on the, it would be the south, southern edge of the property. Just to the south of the main, the main works, the main shop. That's already been seeded. The other part of it is moving forward is how we can do that with whether or not we can do, want to do that in the larger area between where the end main entrance is and the office building. We've also looked at other prairie options that we can put, you know, put in out there as a part of the garden around the building as well. Like I said, the monitor, the the Moing to Monarchs thing is definitely part of it. And then the whole prairie thing is the other part.
Excellent.
We just have to, we just have to be careful what we put close to the building. So it doesn't overgrow the windows and everything else.
Well, I'm not as concerned about what you put close to the, to the building. I want you to put stuff that's really cool and appropriate close to the road so that as the people drive by, they see that we can maybe do some maybe not signage, but all the same, we can be showcasing that that program works for commercial purposes too, would just be pretty awesome. But I appreciate your, your work and your comments today. But you know, I still have great hesitation on the HVAC system.
And that's fine. I can get, I, I will make arrangements to meet with the, the key people and then we can set up a meeting with the board specifically to cover that.
Jay, do you have anything else?
I would be interested at some point knowing the priority of the HVAC upgrade, so I'm not my priority level's not at a super high level at this moment. But the rest of the components you have, I support and be happy to include in our budget.
Could I ask the chair a question? I'd, I'd like to see this be a work session and invite in the impacted parties so that we can be informed about whether there's a need or this is something, I mean, I, I can give testimony, so to speak, about the boardroom. Because I'm guessing it's not on right now because hardly you can't hear when it runs, so. But if we want to bring in maybe one of the judges, maybe Judge Schubert would be kind enough to come in and give us some information on the system. I, I think it's a very high priority for them. They've just kind of stepped off it because they're very thankful that they have a courtroom on the first floor. And then, or the basement floor, I guess, however you count. And then also that they just haven't had as high a usage, but it is very much a, a problem for them. And I think we need to have them come in and tell us that.
I'd agree with most, just about all of your comments, and I find it pretty hard to believe that the system's five years old. And obviously it hasn't deteriorated that much since we've gotten it. Anne said it's been this loud since she's been here, which is three years, so. Relatively new when she came, Jay's been here since it's been put in. And it's a C or a D? Who picked the system out? I mean, that, there's obviously some issues here, Chris.
When we did the original evaluation to upgrade the system, one of the key how can I put this? One of the things that was pressed, impressed upon me was we can't spend too much money. So what the final evaluation was, was to do a one for one replacement with upgraded higher efficiency units. One of the things we ended up with is still the same noise problems.
Probably within two or three months of having it, it should have been, this isn't working. And had some conversations with the manufacturer at that point, they
Well, we've, we've had multiple conversations with that manufacturer. And basically, and jail vouched for this, we were pretty much told, you bought it, it's yours. None of the problems were anything that they created as the, as the manufacturer.
It just, to me, it seems like a lot of money to spend to fix something that's only five years old. I mean, that's
I, I don't disagree. And like I said, it can be, it can be done, it can be done. I wouldn't do it per room. I would do it in blocks of locations, like if we're going to do third floor courtrooms, do the third floor courtrooms. Same thing with the second floor courtrooms. If I was going to do it, what I would do is that way. I would start with the court systems, which have the biggest issue with noise and the boardroom.
I would definitely want some more information on which way to go with it.
We can do that. I, like I said, I can get, I'll get a hold of, I need to get with, I need to find a different mechanical engineer than who we have currently been using. And that's not as easy as it looks because there's only one of them in town. So I will, I have some other options that I recently got information on that I will talk to. And I'll talk to our HVAC contractor, the one that helped me put this whole project together to come in and meet with you. Electrician, the biggest thing with the electrician just had to do with wiring where it needed to be changed to, to get rid of four consoles in here and put two ceiling units in, that sort of thing.
We did have the conversation regarding the storage area and my concern was about the appearance of the courthouse also, and we discussed that. So I would agree with Anne that I'd want something that I can visualize what it's going to look like.
I'm in the process of getting that done right now. The other thing would be is once I have that, is we take fifteen minutes one day and take a walk down there and show you exactly what we're looking to do.
Okay, do you have anything else, Jay? Anne, do you have anything further?
I don't, I don't, Chris, I appreciate what you're doing. It's hard to, it's hard to work with the three supervisors on this issue, the elusive issue of the HVAC system. So I understand that, you know, it's, you're, it just keeps changing and, and that's not through any fault of yours. It's you know, one, is one system good enough and who's going to help us determine that? So, you know, we talked a little bit about the Gronins had offered some of their folks to do a walkthrough and I, I know that we're, I'm probably not very helpful to you, so I'm hoping that you will, you know, maybe come back with, you know, more information and, and not necessarily education, but information from people who are going to have a warranty they're going to stand behind.
I can do that.
If there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the facilities management budget with the exception of the HVAC component. So that includes the bottle fill stations and the cleaning equipment that were ARPA requests, I would roll those into your normal budget. That would be my, my motion.
I ask that the motion be restated. I'm unclear. We've not been approving people's budgets as we've gone along.
Sorry, Anne. Could you repeat that?
I just said, I don't, I don't understand what the, what the motion is. We have not been approving everybody's budget as we go through this. We've not been making a motion to approve, you know, the sheriff's budget. I think what we did was we approved his particular upgrades. Maybe Stella can correct me what the record's going to show.
We've been mostly approving capital projects as we go along. So I think what, what I heard in that motion was the approval of the cleaning equipment and the bottle fill stations out of regular budget, not ARPA.
Isn't the bottle fill station actually already ordered? I mean, isn't, I'm not, I'm not sure why we're, we're taking action on that. It's underway. It must fit inside Chris's budget already. I don't understand.
It's on the agenda and this is a budget meeting, so that's why I included it.
Currently, right now, I took it out of my plumbing budget. So I could get this moving forward and requested the additional funds as part of the budget amendment, final budget amendment for the year, so we can get this moving. We've had a lot of people complaining because we still have some of the units shut down. They aren't, like I said, if, when you look at it from a health and safety issue, we need to get those things in here so people can get water when they need it and not have to worry about it being, you know, getting it out of a drinking fountain where somebody slobbered all over the front of it or whatever it might be, not to be totally gross, but that's usually how it looks.
Stella, what action do we need to take on the, on the bottle fillers?
I think that would probably be best amended into the FY twenty-two budget if it's been ordered. Instead of just taking out, taking it out of a repair budget, I think we should amend it into FY twenty-two capital projects.
And will you be bringing that to us at another time so we can see cost and such?
The costs are, I assume the costs are accurate. They're, they're in our packet.
Yep.
I'm not sure why it's so difficult. They're in our packet. There's only a few items, so. But, you know.
So Stella, when do you want us to take action to amend the current budget?
You can take action at any time. We've set the work sessions up to allow for any action on FY twenty-two or FY twenty-three budget during the work sessions. And I guess the discussion or the motion maybe could be amended to say adding the water bubblers, bottle fill stations, sorry, I said that wrong. Bottle fill stations to the FY twenty-two amendment and include in the FY twenty-three budget, the cleaning equipment.
I'll make that motion.
Can you restate that, please?
Go ahead, Stella.
Basically, it was to amend the twenty-two budget to include the water fill stations and add the cleaning equipment to the fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Does that include the entire maintenance budget as well or is that a separate item? Supervisor McDon, what does your budget include? Does it include the, the facilities maintenance budget or just the two items?
It includes the, the statement that Stella made, which is what she needs to move forward. It's my understanding, it doesn't include any kind of underlying budget.
Why wouldn't we include the, so there's a motion on the floor, do you want to? What do you want to do, Chair?
Well, we would.
I had a motion too, but nothing happened there.
I think we had still, I, I know we haven't approved or approved a lot of the budgets that we've heard, but
I think we approved most of them.
We've approved the capital projects.
You'd have to go to the, the language, but you know, I'll make a motion to approve and then we'd say the department's budget. I would assume that was for future budgets, but I've only been doing seven years, so it's fine. However, you want to proceed, this is very, this is not that difficult.
No.
Making it much more difficult than we normally do for some reason.
All right, I'll try again. Is the chair prepared?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we amend the current fiscal year budget to include the, the water system bubblers, sprinkler, drinking fountains.
That's for the amendment to the twenty-two budget.
That's correct.
Okay. Want to go piece by piece, Stella?
Do you second?
I will second that. I will second that.
So under, under discussion, I assume we're talking about what's labeled in the budget on the agenda as bottle fill stations for $7,000. Is that right? Okay. So as listed on the agenda, bottle fill stations for $7,000. Sounds wonderful.
That's the amendment fiscal year twenty-two budget for that.
That sounds very good.
All in favor, signify by aye.
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 And I'll make, I'll make a second motion that we approve as part of the facilities and maintenance budget for fiscal year twenty-three. The request for the updated cleaning equipment, the HEPA battery vacuums and floor scrubber.
I will second that. Any discussion?
So is that improving the, the maintenance budget and the seventy-five hundred?
She has proven the budget plus the battery vacuums or the cleaning equipment.
Okay, good. It's good. We get two for one.
Yeah. You have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Garry's. Okay, all we need, and you'll be back with some more info on.
Yes, sir.
HVAC.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You bet, Chris. Thank you. Do we need a break or you wanna keep moving?
I'm fine, thank you.
Ann, good. Okay, we'll move into our secondary roads with our county engineer, Anthony Burgett.
Okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so. So the presentation you have before you is just gonna be, you know, a slide format, kinda giving a brief overview of the, the budget itself. The handout that I just gave to you guys and then what's been emailed to supervisor McDonald as well is, is a detailed breakdown of our revenue and expenditure for FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three. It also shows a history back to all of fiscal year nineteen, if you'd like to, you know, take a peek at what, what we've received or what we've expended. So I guess to start off with, we'll kinda go through the slides here. So this is FY twenty-three and amended FY twenty-two budget. To start off with, this is a look at our FY twenty-two reestimated revenue, just a simple pie chart, kinda breaking out, you know, what our revenue sources are. Of course, our three big pieces of revenue that we receive is the, the road use tax, local option sales tax, and the rural property tax. And then we have some other small slices there that come in from miscellaneous sources. Okay, you can go next. FY twenty-three, very similar. You know, very similar breakdown. I'd like to draw your attention to the, the revenue sheet there on, on the first page there. At the very bottom of the page there. Supervisor McDonald, did you receive the, the file yet?
You're muted, Ann. Ann, you're still muted.
I have an extensive spreadsheet. Is that what you're talking about, Anthony?
That'd be it. So the first tab says revenues. If you wanna click into that.
And this was not previously available to us?
This was not, no. This, this was available in the other, the, the budget format that Stella sets up, but this is my own format that gives a little more detailed explanation behind the, behind the expense and revenue items. So this is kinda, this is kinda engineer talk versus courthouse talk.
Okay, so did you wanna screen share this?
You can't, well, I'd rather not because it's, it's gonna kinda get in the way of the presentation, I guess, but we can, we can show it real quick with the revenue, I believe, if you wanna do it that way.
Are you gonna be referring to it as you go along?
Very briefly. I will mainly use the slides. Do the revenue sheet. Okay, so if you wanna scroll to the right and then just pull all the way down to the bottom there. Oh, yeah, right there. So, yeah, it's pull more to the right. Okay, so. So what we're projecting for reestimated fiscal year twenty-two is about fifteen point five million dollars of revenue receive, received. And then for fiscal year twenty-three, we are projecting sixteen million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So I just wanted to kinda draw your attention to what the total revenue projection is for our current fiscal year and upcoming fiscal year. And again, the, the three big pieces are the road, road use tax, local option sales tax, and property tax that, that make up the majority of that revenue. So that's all I want to draw your attention to there.
Anthony, can I ask you about the local option sales tax?
Sure.
Is all of that money used for roads, all the extra penny that's collected in Dubuque County?
Yes, it is. That's the way the resolution was, was set up when the, the original, like, you know, original vote was put in place. So it's a hundred percent towards roads and bridges.
And when does it expire?
It does not expire. There's, there's no sunset on this one. And that, that kinda varies across the state. Some, some have a ten-year sunset, some have no sunsets at all. So our, ours was set up with no expiration date.
And you, you, have you been following what the state legislature has proposed, the Senate?
Yes, I have, yeah. Briefly, just kinda reading into it. Yeah, I've been kinda anxious to see what that would do for our, our revenue, that some say that it might increase it, but I'm, I'm. I'm skeptical until I'm proven wrong. I guess, you know, that, that's actually gonna help us. I'd, I'd rather see each individual county have its own control, that way voters know what's, what's, what's coming in and how it's being expended, instead of being told how it's gonna be expended.
Right, because it's never gonna all be used for roads.
Correct. And that's, that's a concern of mine. If, if we have to reduce from a hundred percent. Down from what we are now and take a, take a lower sort of cut on the revenue piece, that, that is a very, very important piece of our, our budget that, you know, funds, I, I think a really healthy road construction budget that we have. Certainly, we are not flush with money by any means. We have plenty of issues that we have to deal with in this county, but it allows us to. You know, try to take care of some needs that we have, and if that starts reducing, then we're gonna be that much more behind the ball, I guess.
Right. I appreciate those comments and we'll have to get in touch of our, with our senators and let them know the implication of that on the county roads.
Sure. Okay, so continuing on in the presentation there, you can move on to the next sheet there. So fiscal year twenty-two reestimated budget expenses. You know, the majority of the expense comes from roadway construction. And then there's, there's a breakdown from there and, and roads, which is your typical, your, your gravel, your, your culvert replacements, your typical maintenance items. And then it breaks down into ice controls, traffic control, you know, road clearing, new equipment, just, just lots of other smaller pieces in there. But the majority of the expenses are, are, are road construction for fiscal, so for fiscal year twenty-two, just shy fifty percent was road construction. So move on to twenty-three. Then you can say we take a pretty significant leap towards the road, road construction side in this, this fiscal year twenty-three budget coming in. We have a decent carryover balance right now and so, and we have a lot of needs out there for, for pavements especially, but some bridges as well. So we are planning for quite a busy season, the season for construction. So that's why there's a, a big, big leap in the green color there for road construction. Move on. So administration, this is our administration budget. This is just pretty much what happens within our office. It's the office manager salaries plus, plus my salary. Office expenses, printers, copiers, things like that. Kind of a unique situation that, you know, we have that kinda, kinda messes with this, this bar chart is. My expenditure or my salary is, you know, expensed out and then we receive a reimbursement back from Delaware County with my, my sharing arrangement. So we actually have to show that we expend on our budget sheet a higher amount and then as the revenue comes in from Delaware County. That is reimbursed back into that line item. So the actual final expenditure in, 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 in the next year will actually reflect lower versus what we have to actually budget. But any expense that we expend has, has to be reported to the DOT. And so when we receive the revenue and back it back down, the, the DOT doesn't care about that. They just wanna see the expense. So that's why it, it kinda fluctuates like that. Okay, move on to the next page. So kind of a summary of administration, we, we did increase a little bit of expense for multiple departments using the stamp machine. We, we have the stamp machine with, basically within our office and so we're sharing the expenses across the, the West Campus offices there and. So we have to expend the, you know, the, the purchase of the stamps and then we're reimbursed for, for that situation. And then FY twenty-three, steady keeping the changes from reestimate. Okay, engineering, pretty steady over the last couple of years. We are showing a, a quite an increase for fiscal year twenty-three budget. And that is due in part to the consultant fees that we're anticipating for the build grant project. We're mostly wrapping up the consultant fees for both, who is our design engineer. We are getting ready to go out for, or we will, we have the RP's already out and come back to us for the construction engineering consultant. Actually, next week, we are preparing to do the, the interviews and supervisor McDonald is one of the. People on the interview team helping score that. So we will be going through that process and hiring a consultant, a construction engineering consultant to help manage the, the build grant project. So that's reflected in fiscal year twenty-three. Next. So, yeah, you can, you can skip that. It's fine. I just explained that. So bridges and culverts, this is just pretty much our, our maintenance, our maintenance item for repairs on bridges and culverts. Pretty steady. You could see back in fiscal year eighteen, we really started taking off. That's that purplish color. We started taking off on replacing bad culverts around the county. We've been pretty, pretty steady ever since then. You know, there's no shortage of a bad pipe on, on this county, so it's, that is a continuing effort for us. Okay. I guess we made a slight increase to the FY twenty-two budget. We're seeing inflation in prices, you know, obviously we all are, but specifically steel pipe. Is, is inflating and it's hard to even get a, you know, lock down a price even by the week, it seems. So we have to anticipate for a little bit of inflation on the, the steel prices. Okay, roads budget, that is our gravel, gravel budget. That's our, you know, if we do any asphalt patching, concrete patching, salaries for. Maintenance employees that work out of, you know, out on the roads. With our maintainers or hauling rock or whatever that might be. It's been pretty steady over the last few years. We, we did make an increase this, this fiscal year twenty-two. For more rock on the gravel roads, we added, added tonnage to each, to each road. So that's a little bit of increase and otherwise in fiscal year twenty-three, we're, we're keeping it steady with FY twenty-two. Okay, just kinda break down there. Increase rock tonnage for contract rock, increase for ditch cleaning projects, increase for shoulder projects, an increase for erosion control used on ditch cleaning projects. And reduce some entrances for low, low usage and then FY twenty-three stays same. Okay, snow and ice. When it's sunny outside, this, this budget is low. That's, that's the, that's the beauty of this budget is, as long as it's snowing out there, obviously, we're gonna be on the low end. You could see the last couple of years, we've, we've trended lower. Which is a good thing. Yeah, what, what you shoot, see right there for FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three is a, it's pretty much what we've consistently budgeted over the last several years. We, we tried to be pretty aggressive with our, our salt usage and getting the roads to dry out as quickly as possible. The last few years, we've had some pretty light winters. So it shows you just kind of in comparison to what we're budgeting for and what's actually been expended. So. When we have several or a couple of weeks in it, stretches with good weather, that really helps the budget quite a bit. And I always say, if we get into like that mid, mid to late February, the sun's got a lot of power and it, you know, it's, the, the salt's gonna cut a lot quicker and. We're not gonna expend as much on this budget. So it's trending, trending pretty well for this year. Okay, next. No change in both budgets. Traffic control, that's, that's pretty much our pavement markings budget that we do around the county. We do some sign, signage purchases through there. So just, you know, just some, some typical items for, for, for traffic control. I guess I should, should bring this to our attention here. We recently applied for a, what's called a T-SIP grant through the, through the DOT. It's a transportation safety improvement program, I believe it is, grant to go after some portable. Traffic lights to be used on maintenance projects. It could be used on a variety of things. So it's, it's, they're basically mobile traffic control, traffic control signals. And we applied for a fifty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollar grant and we were awarded that to buy two, two signals. So we're gonna have to get with you, Stella, and add that potential revenue in and then there's gonna be an expansion for that as well. So we'll have to expand and then get a revenue back for that. So that's good news.
Great.
Okay, move on. So yeah, FY twenty-three, just a slight increase for traffic control. We're anticipating some paint, paint price, paint prices, inflation. We've already been warned about that from last year and there was already a shortage last year. Our contractor that, that did our paint last year actually had to, had to get paint from Wisconsin and couldn't get Iowa paint. So it's. The supply issue is, is hidden from all angles for sure. So move on. Okay, road clearing. So this, this budget is cause directly inverse of the snow and ice, ice control budget. So when, when it's sunny outside, typically, we're trying to do some road clearing. This is typically our, our brush cutting, you know, getting on the ditches and trying to clear out the excess brush that's out there. So you can see the last couple of years, the, the expense has been high. That's because the snow and ice control has been low. So we try to keep the guys busy. They're out doing brush cutting and, and, you know, a number of other things, but that's one of the primary duties in the wintertime when it's, when it's not snowing. Okay, move on. Uh, new equipment, we've been fairly steady with that. See, we're keeping the same budget for this year and next year. Equipment is increasing a little bit, so we'll see what's, what's going on. We've already been told that if we're gonna order any dump trucks this year, don't, don't expect to see them until fiscal, our calendar year twenty-three. Which is. Pretty unusual because we usually would see them. If we order them now, we'll see them in August, September of the same year. They're saying we won't see them till next year. So the, the supply chain thing is, is hitting hard again from all angles. So, yeah, pretty much staying the same there. Equipment operations, that's just, you know. Um, equipment operations, that's just, you know, uh, um, just our different operations for equipment as far as uh, repairs, things like that, uh, fairly consistent. You want to go to the next sheet real quick? So we do, do have an increase for the, the fuel spike. That's, that's, that's taking place and will keep taking place, it sounds like. Um, again, steel price inflation, so any parts that, that are steel related, you know, we're seeing increases on that. Um, you know, parts overall are, are, are in short supply and, and, and on the rise for prices. So we're, we're having to uh, reestimate for this fiscal year and then keeping it steady for fiscal year twenty three budget. As, as, as FY twenty two re-estimated. Okay, tools, materials and supplies, that's just your, you know, your typical items around the shop that we keep. You know, we, we've, we have a standard budget that's, that's usually about the same. Uh, you want to go to the next sheet real quick? Uh, no change to both budgets. Um, that one fluctuates a bit. It depends on how much stock we need. You know, they, we may stock up more and the, so the expense item goes up more. Um, if there isn't much uh, purchasing for stock, then that, that will be on a lower end. So that, that's kind of what that previous page showed is a lower, lower expense for the last few years. Next. All right, real estate and buildings. Uh, obviously the big one there was, was uh, FY eighteen, that was the Farley, Farley shop there. Um, otherwise, we've just been had, uh, been having some, you know, fairly uh, fairly low expenditure numbers for um, just miscellaneous items around buildings, um, whatever that might be, just usually pretty, pretty minor stuff that, that needs repaired around buildings. Um, anything major would typically come out of a capital expenditure um, going forward. No change in both budgets. So grand total, um, FY twenty three is, is our FY twenty two is up just a little bit. Um, FY twenty three is up quite a bit and that's, that's doing nature to the uh, roadway construction. I'll show you that on the next sheet there. So roadway construction is uh, increasing significantly. We have uh, quite a few roads and bridges we're planning for this, this coming up here. Um, so it's gonna be local cash wise, our biggest year. Um, we've had, we've had, you know, in, in combination of foreign market funds and STBG funds, you know, we've had some big years, but as far as local cash expenditure, this is uh, this will be our biggest year.
Does this include the build grant component?
This does not.
Does not, okay.
Nope. So, yeah. Uh, so that's just local cash. So then the, anything on top of that is, if we use foreign marketer STBG, um, that, that would be outside of that window. Um, we don't have any foreign market projects planned for this year, but the bill grant would be a um, an SDBG project. So that would be on top of that. So current, current fiscal year twenty two projects, so kind of in summary of what we accomplished last year. Um, we paved twenty-four point four nine miles of roads to be exact, um, eight structures replaced for uh, about seven point eight million dollars spent towards those projects. So kind of give an overview of each project. Uh, it's just a quick little map of where, what all we covered through the county. So the Simon Road Bridge is one of our bridges we replaced as a, it's a fairly long bridge. Um, there was a twenty ton embargo bridge, so it uh, kind of shows a poor picture and um, it's, it's right off a highway, highway one fifty-one. And then after picture, um, showing the replacement there. On Gun Club Road Bridge, that was a forty ton um, embargoed bridge. I, I put up forty tons on there because that's what we had it posted at. Uh, if it, that was posted for a one lane, um, center truck over the bridge uh, situation. If it was a, if it was rated for a two lane bridge, at that time it was a twenty ton bridge. So, this was on a minor collector road. Um, officially a tw- uh, twenty ton bridge on a two lane uh, travel way. So this was an important bridge to get rid of on the Gun Club Road. Okay, Chester Road Bridge, we replaced a twenty-five ton embargoed bridge, right there on the curve. Um, Millville Road Bridge replaced a ten ton bridge. Uh, Carper Harbor Road, and that was a replacement of a thirty-two ton uh, Pony Trust Bridge. Uh, in my opinion, it's always good to see those things go. I mean, they're, they're nice to see, you know, that's a nice throwback bridge, but uh, they're fracture critical and uh, they're, they're, they're one of those bridges that uh, could quickly become historic on you and they're fracture critical and they just, they can cause some issues for you in the future. So it's, it's a good one to see replaced. Okay, Stager Road Bridge, we replaced a fifteen ton embargoed bridge. Hidden Valley Lane Bridge, that was a replacement of a ten ton embargoed bridge. Uh, Terra Lane Bridge, that one replaced a thirty-two ton bridge. And then McAllister Road, uh, box culvert, uh, replaces a little deteriorated box culvert there. And I should say, these last two, two projects that we use the other rural tank cars on these, these two projects. So pretty cost effective on those. Okay, Cedar Ridge Road East, um, that was east of uh, Bud Road. We were, uh, we resurfaced three point one eight miles with um, an HMA overlay. English Mill Road, we resurfaced three point three four miles. Uh, Cox Springs Road, we uh, paved new um, PCC pavement, concrete pavement for one point one five miles. Rollercoaster Road, that was a new two point eight two mile PCC unbonded overlay project. And then uh, asphalt overlay projects on Keenan Kemp Roads, two point four, five four miles. And then we did a high pro, uh, quick little mill and fill, um, what we call high pro asphalt. It's a special mix. High, high oil content uh, on Military Road, North Cascade Road, um, Horseshoe Road, Cedar Ridge Road West and Sugar Heights Road. And then for fiscal year twenty three proposed, um, we're looking at doing forty-one point four nine miles of roads to be resurfaced. Uh, five bridges and culvert structures, approximately seventeen point three million dollars planned for, for FY twenty three. And this is again, just local, local money. This does not include the build grant project.
Wow. It's a big number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna be busy.
Good.
Okay.
Very good.
I guess we, I guess we want good weather, Anthony.
Oh yeah, we need good weather. Yes, we do. So this is kind of a, shows a spread of the projects for FY twenty three. I feel good about touching almost all, all corners of the county there and uh, some pretty significant needs out there. A lot of deteriorated um, old asphalt roads. So let's walk through each one we're doing. Um, so we're looking at doing Old Massey Road. Um, actually the plans will be on for approval on Monday for you guys to approve and they'll be going out for bids. Uh, two and a half miles of uh, HMA overlay, widened slopes, replace culverts. Budget estimated about a million dollars. Goose Hill Road, Raker Road, that has uh, seven, seven point three miles of HMA overlay. Getting widened slopes, replace culverts and a budget estimate of about three point two million dollars. Um, Old Farley Road and Rockville Road, uh, about nine point eight miles of HMA overlay. Uh, widen slopes, replace culverts and a budget estimate of about three point four million. Okay, then we have Thunder Road, um, two point nine six miles of HMA overlay, widen the slopes, uh, replace culverts. Budget estimate about one point two million. Habrecorn Road, uh, four point six one miles of HMA overlay. Um, widen slopes, replace culverts and a budget estimate of about one point five million. You're, you're obviously seeing a trend of this at, and asphalt overlay. It's what we've known for quite a few years. I try to incorporate concrete when we can. Um, most of the time we have pretty narrow shoulders that, um, and you know, some, some pretty steep hills and curves that um, are not conducive to the concrete mix that uh, you know, that we, that would be required for. Uh, you're gonna end up getting pretty thick and very, you know, very narrow on the shoulder. So, for the most part, we're, we are, we're using the HMA overlay as uh, the tool um, for these, for these roads, but where I can, I do uh, try to, try to incorporate concrete. Okay, next. Uh, Flanagan Road and James Road, six point three five miles of HMA overlay. Again, widen slopes, replace culverts, uh, budget estimate of about two point one million.
Yeah, they, on James and Flanagan, is there gonna be any state assistance on that because of Highway fifty-two?
Because it was not the official detour, they are not gonna do anything for us. And so I've talked to them about that. If they had designated as a detour, that, then they, they would um, be reimbursing us for that. Because it was the unofficial detour, you know, they're not gonna, they're not gonna participate on that, unfortunately. So uh, Sundown Road, that's actually out for bid this month. Um, we approved those plans a month or two ago. Um, that's from Old Highway Road to Asbury Road, two point seven miles of HMA overlay, widen slopes, replace culverts and regrade uh, the hill there at Humky Road. Um, budget estimate of about one point eight million dollars. And then we're looking to do some, what I call ma- maintenance HMA overlays, probably some quick little mill and fills on uh, Bankston Park Road, New Vienna Road, Old Hawkeye Road and, and North Bankston Road. Uh, so now we're kind of getting to the point where um, along with these major overlays we're doing, we want to try to keep up with these roads that are twelve, fifteen years old and try to keep them in good structural shape and keep resurfacing them. So, we can almost treat them like a perpetual pavement and then just keep cycling them and not let them get so deteriorated that we have to spend a lot of money on them per mile. So that's, that's this one. It's, it's about a million dollars. It's looking at about a hundred fifty thousand dollars per mile. Um, your typical HMA overlay, um, on these other projects are right, right around three hundred and fifty thousand per mile. So I, I want to try to, where we can um, save, you know, save those roads from getting to that point. Okay, next. Hickory Valley Road Bridge, um, we're gonna replace a twenty-three ton um, Pony Trust Bridge. Um, budget estimate is four hundred and forty-eight thousand. Ameren Road Bridge, um, replacement of a twenty-eight ton embargoed bridge. Five hundred and one thousand. North Banks and Road Bridge, replacement of a fourteen ton embargoed bridge. Um, interesting little scroll work in that uh, concrete railing there, you know, it's, it's, I think this one dates back to nineteen twenty-three. The um, different craftsmanship back then. Um, budget estimate of three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Conrad Lane Bridge, that's a replacement of a sixteen ton embargoed bridge. Um, this is one of our last, like, lower embargoed bridges. Most of them now are up in that twenty ton or above. So we're kind of getting out of that hole that we were in the last few years.
Yeah, that one would scare you a little bit.
Yeah. Um, actually the, somebody actually cut the railing off and, and uh,
I was gonna say, what happened to the railing?
I'll just say someone cut the railing off to give a piece of equipment down the road.
Sure. Well, luckily they made it across.
It's on a dead end road and serves one farm, so that, you can imagine. So.
Conrad at the other end, I bet.
Uh, Chestman Road Bridge, replacement of a, uh, this one's interesting. So uh, if you know where uh, you know, Cox Springs Road is and where Chestman Road meets, right across the north of the tracks there on the east side, there's a little bridge there that has a gate on it. Well, this one um, has a particular landowner that uh, uh, she just passed away and uh, it's been um, uh, handed down to the daughter, I believe, and she's looking to lease out uh, her ground to uh, to, to a farmer. The only access to this ground is through this bridge. And uh, they actually have a key that they've been using to get back and forth over the last however many years through this bridge. That bridge scares me.
So it's the tunnel on the other side of this?
It's on the other side.
Side, so.
This is the only access to this, to this particular property.
One of the reasons I've heard that we're gonna do the tunnels, we'd have to also do this bridge. So you're actually gonna do the bridge, so.
Yeah.
One down. All right.
So I, I don't see a lot of the solutions on that one, so I think.
So you're gonna open it up and so then we'll might have to do something at the tunnel?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we'll have to put up.
Similar crop, similar blocking that you have on the other, whatever it is, east side.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Well, that's it for projects. Um, and then I just kind of put some miscellaneous discussion items that we could have today. I think all three of you were at the uh, the RPA meeting, um, where we had some discussion about the RCTP funding program. And uh, Chanderavada brought up, you know, uh, that maybe each county needs to have some discussion whether we want to look at increasing the amounts that are, that are, that are uh, put out each year towards the small cities. This is our small city, uh, you know, kind of swap funding program. Um, seventy-five thousand dollars is available every year. It's actually seventy thousand, five thousand is, is for the administration with the ECI. So seventy thousand is available to um, the cities on a, on a yearly basis. Um, so I just wanted to throw this on there to see if the board has any appetite to try to increase this. It is something that where we have to expend out of our local funding and then we receive the, the one-to-one match out of the uh, SDBG account. So it's, it is a one-to-one replacement, but at different pots, different streams of money. So just something to kind of throw out there. Um, I don't think Chand was looking for any decision until the, the following um, application timeframe, which would be, you know, next, next year around this time, but we want to make some decisions a little bit before that. So probably October, November-ish, we want to start thinking about, um, if we're gonna make any changes to this.
Anthony, this is Anne. Do you have any recommendation?
I don't have any strong recommendation as to whether we, it should be increased. Um, I think, you know, from the cities I've heard from, they're very appreciative if they're able to get a twenty or twenty-five thousand dollar grant. That helps them tremendously. Now, bear in mind, you know, we're all gonna see increase, increases in prices with contractors and with, with labor materials. Um, and it's gonna affect this program as well, so I'm sure, you know, they wouldn't turn down and increase the money because it's, it's not getting cheaper to maintain roads and bridges either. Um, even in small towns, so um, I don't have a strong recommendation at this point.
At one point, we, maybe we're a little slower on the uptake with getting the cities to apply. Can you comment how the last couple of years have been related to those projects and have a lot of them been in that twenty-five thousand dollar range?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the first year or two, it seemed like it was a little slow. You know, we had to kind of get them on board. Um, but it's been very competitive since then. Um, majority of the, of the towns are putting in applications. Um, you're seeing, you know, within, within the, you know, each round of twenty and twenty-five thousand dollar application and then a smaller one behind that. Um, and it's, and everybody has to kind of wait their turn. If they've got one, who, they have to take a dock and points. So I think it's a good system to keep it revolving to different towns. Um, but yeah, you're seeing quite a few twenty and twenty-five thousand dollar awards that are being spread out.
What was the formula to create this seventy thousand to begin with? Was it based upon our overall percentages that we receive and then what we felt we could accomplish or what was the, was the starting point for the seventy grand?
Some of it was the small city, small city fund at the RPA level.
Okay, so they have the fund being.
We have that small city fund that there's only so much money in it and we all felt like the, the seventy thousand or seventy-five thousand per year um, was, was enough money to um, have that fund support it. Um, now I, I think Chandler mentioned that that fund has grown a little bit, so that's maybe some discussion we need to have, but Chandler is like, okay, if we, if we, let's say increases to a hundred thousand dollars, can that fund absorb that twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars extra per year? So.
Get reimbursed that one-on-one.
Right. And then what are the other counties gonna do? So we, if we all of a sudden start increasing hundred thousand for each county, you know, it's, it, it's gonna be some pressure on that fund. So we need to have some more discussion, I think, with Chandler on that, but.
Is it population or pro-rata or miles of road based? That, that overall fund that comes to Dubuque County?
That would be based on uh, based on our region as far as population miles.
Um, the, the original big bucket, but then breaking it down to our, whatever it is, four or six counties.
We, I think we pulled out ten percent out of our overall budget and we set that aside for the small cities fund.
Okay, so ten percent comes from the small cities.
Yep.
Uh, my, my, I mean, you have the program established, it's being used, you've got the ECI. I mean, I would tend to want to increase it to, to allow more participation amongst those, those small communities. So I, I think that, that's where I am at, whether it's another twenty grand or a hundred grand, I, I don't know without knowing the, the formula.
Yeah, let me get back with Chandler to see what, what that fund can absorb or what, what it can, what it, what it can have for a one-to-one relationship and what it can, you know, help us with. So, um, I'll get back to you on that one.
Okay, Anne, did you have anything?
No.
Okay.
I guess, uh, I wanted to have a, just a quick little discussion about the traffic cameras. Um, I think Nathan Gilmore brought this up in his presentation a little bit about the, the camera that's gonna be installed down there on Sundown Road. We have one over there by Cyple Road. Um, this is something I'd like to see us implement. At least to try to get a few out there in the county around, around the corners of the county. Um, and the big benefit for us would be just kind of seeing what's going on with the weather conditions around the county, you know, when, when we have snow and ice coming. Um, it could vary a lot from, from across, from across the county. It might be snowing up north, it might be raining or icing down a little bit down south. So, this is just one of those things that I think could be a good, good tool in our, our tool bag to um, help manage snow and ice, you know, especially for our foremen who if you, if you try to drive around all the roads in the, in the county and get around, as you probably know, um, Harley, it's take six hours or so to kind of really cover all that. Um, so this, this is something that I'm interested in. So this, this is something that I'm interested in. I think, you know. Gives also the public a perspective of what's going on around the county. Not only looking at, you know, with the, the public five-on-one system. Not only. You know, the, the public can, can click into their plow camera, but they can always, you know, that's only when the plows are running. These cameras would be static and, you know, available at any given time. So something to talk about, something to consider. I don't know where, I missed that discussion with Nathan, I guess, I don't know where that went.
Lot of issues with fiber stuff too, I think, in there, but I do remember him saying he's not gonna go as. Not gonna go as crazy as the, you know, city of Dubuque.
Right, right. We don't want to do that.
Cameras.
No.
Um, I guess I'm open to it, I'm just trying to think what would be the best benefit. I mean, where's our most interesting or viable intersection or roadway? That would add value.
Yeah, we have to kind of still figure that out.
One in Cyple's neat. I just saw one car go by when I watched for forty-five seconds.
Sure, yeah. Anyway, obviously, we're not using a watch traffic.
We can watch when, I've seen three thirty goes out and all the workers come on the cabbana, that might be more interesting. I don't know, instant law enforcement, what's your, what's your two cents? I should minimize the importance.
I like the cameras. I'm not gonna lie about that. I guess I'm not sure how many you're looking at. If we're gonna have them, I'd, I'd prefer to have them at some intersections like maybe Cyple and Old Highway where we have a lot, you know, high accidents. It can be used for law enforcement also, purposes to see who actually ran the stop sign, kind of like in the city here. Everybody has the green light, well, it just don't work that way. Bring up the camera and it's like, you know who had the green light, you know, it protects everybody then, you know?
Yeah.
And you can still use it for your road, you know, if you want it. Locations that you can see, what you need to see, but where it could also benefit another agency.
I think that'd be a great thing. We could coordinate with the sheriff's office and, you know, get with, get with Joe and see what his perspective is on what intersections. Give them the most fits. I think you have a perspective on that as well. That we could maybe try to get some synergy going in the different departments.
I'd be in favor of the cameras, or cameras. Anne?
I would agree hardly with what you've said about the need for the cameras. You would, you would know the locations, certainly, but I do think we want to make sure the public knows that. Our interest in this is, serves several purposes and will be conservative in its use. So that would be perceived as different, I think, than folks feel about the citywide cameras, so strategic and, and minimal.
Right. That's my perspective, is exactly what you said, strategic, you know, covering some important intersections. Kind of getting a good, a good view or picture of what's going on around the county for, for weather-wise, but certainly not to cover each intersection, that's cost prohibitive, prohibitive anyways.
Right.
Yeah. And I guess I threw just a little burp on there about the discussion on the airport shop. We are still continuing the discussions with airport staff. This morning, we looked at site layout a little bit. We're still working on, you know, the estimates for the building itself. Think we put in the budget with still about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars to cover the entire cost. So we're, we're back checking that little bit and make sure that's correct. You know, so there, there's some permitting we have to go through because it's an FAA permitted site, so we have to do some site survey. And elevation certificates, send in for FAA permits. So we're doing some initial investigation right now. We hope to, in the next couple of months, you know, have something more solid available to bring to you guys. I guess yesterday I was just notified by the DOT that our maintainer operator up there at the Key West Shed, he has to be out by the end of February. He's out. So they are looking at auctioning that in April, so they're, they want him out by the end of February so they can start clearing things out and getting that ready, so that, that is on the move now.
Tell them if they can guarantee it won't snow in March, deal's on.
Yeah.
Where you have a place to move them to or where you're going with them or?
I asked Joe, hopefully you know Joe Kilburg with the DOT, he's the, the area foreman around here. I, I asked him, is, worst case scenario, can we? Plug in at your new shop somewhere in a cold shed or something like that? He was looking at that. Worst, worst case scenario, he could always go to the airport shop and there's, there's an outlet in that, that building that he can just plug into, plug some machine in there and keep it warm. So that's it for that presentation. Any questions on, on this or anything you saw?
No questions, but I would. Point to the last page, seven of seven of your, your handout related to the ending balance.
Yes.
So with all the work you've been doing in the past series of years and, and one, our tax collections being pretty, pretty strong. And then this next year being maybe fifty percent what we've normally have done. Your ending balances are really coming down.
Yeah.
And so that's good. I've been looking at those and they've been, they've been full and robust in my whole term. And if we can get the work done, we'll, we'll have normalized ending balances, which are, which are good, real good sign.
The revenues, yeah, the different revenue streams we have, kind of, kind of goes in cycles. You know, a few years ago, we had probably six million dollars worth of foreign market project expenditures. And that is not reflected in this, that comes from the foreign market fund. That was a lot of our projects that year, but it didn't show, reflect in the local expenditure for, for construction. Now that the foreign market is down, we have to wait till that to build up again, you know. Now's the time to try to tackle this and put a local expenditure back into the, these projects, so it'll be kind of cyclical, but. You know, I'm, I'm trying to tackle that, that cover balance quite a bit and bring that down.
Seventeen million dollars in projects, you're, you're definitely attempting that, so, so good job and look forward to seeing those projects.
Definitely doing a great job and getting the bridges replaced and roads done, so.
Thanks, thank you.
Anne?
We have a good team.
Yeah, Anthony, I, I, I think I just asked you to. You know, address the press about bridges in Iowa in light of the Pennsylvania bridge collapse. We've probably all seen that graph floating around about Iowa having the most unsafe bridges of any state in, in the country. And I think it would be nice if you could give us, you know, a high-level assessment of the stat, the, the condition of the bridges in Dubuque County. Do citizens have anything to be worried about?
I mean, when you, when you talk about overloaded vehicles or overweight vehicles and the structure deficient, deficient bridges or load embargoed bridges. You know, there's always a risk. I don't want to say there's a risk to collapse here in this county, but you know, there's a risk around the nation and that's what you saw there. You probably saw some sort of overloading situation. There was probably some sort of design detail that, that was deficient and there, there went the collapse. I, I, I think, I'm fairly confident in our system that we're in a lot better shape, you know, we still have some of these structurally deficient bridges out there. Some fracture critical bridges, you know, like the Pony Trust Bridges that we went through today.
The one on Conrad Lane might qualify for the unsafe bridges in Dubuque County.
Yeah, I mean. The, now the way we try to counter that, you know, we, we go through the, the load rating process and we go through the bridge inspection process, so. Every bridge has to be on a two-year cycle at least. The fracture critical bridges have to be on a one-year cycle, so any of those Pony Trust Bridges, we're looking at on a yearly basis to see if there's any changes to them. We have to do a hands-on touch, make sure there's nothing, there's no fatigue cracking or anything in the, in the metal. So I think we do a really good job inspecting everything. If something needs to be load rated, we get on it right away and that's, that's where we put the postings up. So as long as the public is abiding by the postings, that's a safe. You know, good safe factor, safety built into that posting that keeps the public safe. When you overload that, overstress that, that's, that's when you can have problems, so. That said, I think we've, we've replaced enough of those really, really scary bridges. If you would ask me that question five years ago, I'd say I'm, yeah, I'm nervous. There, there are bridges out there that were definitely worrying me, but we're in a much better, much better condition since then.
Okay, I appreciate that. I know that Senator Hines said at the Dyersville Legislature, Legislature. I guess it was a luncheon that they had, that, that was a goal that he had was to increase the weight limits for county roads. So that larger pieces of found a market equipment could be used. And, you know, I just kind of reminded him that those roads are not necessarily all designed to carry ever-increasing weights, right? I mean, that's how we get ourselves into overload situations when bigger and bigger equipment uses roads and bridges that, that we're, we're just not prepared for that yet, so.
Well, it's simple physics of it. If you add a load, you have an equal and opposite reaction to it, so, and if that equal and opposite reaction can't, can't withstand it, it's, you're gonna have failure, so.
But I see that as a, I see that as a future threat to, to, you know, the wonderful work that you're doing. It's kind of a, a race to see if we can get our infrastructure up to the level and you've made tremendous progress. But we need to be at a certain level to anticipate what the state legislature is going to allow for increased, increased load limits. And then the same thing would be a threat is changes to the sales tax law, which would threaten that local option sales tax. It's used exclusively in Dubuque County for roads. So those are two threats that I see that, you know, come to us from things outside our control.
Yeah, if you, we didn't have the local option sales tax, again, we would not have this aggressive of a program. I mean, what you're seeing us put together for this, this coming year is. Usually comes from that local option sales tax, so it's very, very beneficial to us. We do not want to see that get dinged whatsoever, so I'm pretty protective of that program.
I have nothing further?
I guess one final thing, Dawn, you want to kind of get into this information?
So we were negotiations for our current secondary roads contract. And one of the proposals that the union had brought to us at that time was, is, was discussion about the mechanic's shop wages within that department. And so at that time, the negotiations were going fairly well, fairly quickly. And Anthony and I wanted to take some time to, to look at some of our comparables, really kind of digest some of the information they gave us. So we, we ended up ratifying the contract without any movement on the mechanic or the shop supervisor's wages. But we did have an agreement that Anthony and I would, would take a look at them. And so that's, that's what we have done in the past couple of weeks and actually met with the union as well with that. When Anthony and I and his team met, one of the first things I asked was, what is the problem? I felt like maybe we're trying to find a solution and there's not a problem. I said, we, we have full capacity of staff. We've only had two turnovers in the last eleven years. What, what's, what is the issue? Anthony communicated to me, and please chime in if I'm speaking wrong, that we anticipate some, two of the four to retire here in the next two to four years. And him and his team feel our wages are, are very low, they are not competitive in order to get an experienced mechanic in here at that time. And so we took a look at it and said, instead of waiting till that time and then being behind the eight ball and maybe having vacancies. And, you know, that affects the ability to, to turnover equipment and get that fixed quickly. We wanted to look at the wage scale now, get it in a good competitive place, knowing that these retirements are indeed coming, they're inevitable. And so Anthony and I and Chad, his superintendent, looked at some of the comparable wages across the state. And also more importantly, some of our local mechanic shops, because that's who we're going to be competing against. We're not going to be pulling mechanics from, from Scott County or Lynn County. We're going to be pulling them from your truck countries, your, your private companies here. And the union did forward us some information as well. They did a nice job pulling together, showing that these, out, these private companies are also becoming very competitive in their benefits as well. You know, we, we pride ourselves here at the county for having a very nice retirement program through the IPR's program. And also the health insurance program, which is low premiums and very low out-of-pocket costs to, for our employees. But others are needing to shift that way as well, and some of the private businesses are needing to shift that way as well to stay competitive and recruit, retain these mechanics. So we were looking at, right now, we, for the mechanics, there's just one wage scale. And then there's one for the shop supervisor. There's three mechanics and one shop supervisor that we're, we're talking about. So when Anthony and I and Chad looked at it, we would like to look at adding another mechanic pay scale. So what we would do is we would leave the current one in place and call that a mechanic one on the current pay scale in place. And then add an additional one, mechanic two, with a higher level pay skill in it. And this would give us two things. This would be able, in the future, if we had maybe one, a mechanic that was not as experienced. Give them, have them come in as a one, and as they develop their skills, they would have the opportunity to move up. Or, and this is probably the case that's gonna be happening when we have these retirements, in order for us to attract an experienced mechanic. We want to have that mechanic two pay skill available to be able to offer to place them in that. Because they have the skills and the knowledge to fulfill that position and really be able to come in and, and get right to work with minimal training on our, on our equipment. So what we were looking at, the current scale, the current top of our mechanics scale is twenty-seven twelve. We would like to keep that for the mechanic one and then have the mechanic two scale be twenty-eight dollars to thirty-two dollars per hour. And again, that's for the ones we would have increased skills and abilities, they would be working on more of our complex pieces of equipment. And, you know, we do have a, a pretty small shop, you know, there, there's gonna be a lot of cross-training. There has been, and we feel that the three that are currently in place, we feel that would, would meet those mechanic two. They've been there, they are, they are working on all pieces of equipment. And then we would also, would like, we have one shop supervisor. We've, we looked at their comparables around the state and some of our local comparisons. Our shop supervisor pay scale tops out at twenty-eight dollars an hour. So we would look and request that we would move that to thirty-one to thirty-five, or thirty-five dollars per hour. That would be the wage scale for that. Again, to, to stay competitive and, and Anthony, I don't know if you can talk a little bit more about what the shop supervisor responsibilities are versus the mechanics and how he interacts with that team?
Yeah, I mean, the shop supervisor obviously has to, to, to manage the, the, the three mechanics in the, in the shop. You know, he's got a lot of, lot of, you know, duties on, on top of that as far as maintaining stock supplies, scheduling services, outside services. You know, keeping track of fuel supplies, oil supplies. There, there's just, there's a lot to what he does. To be a true shop supervisor, you know, we've, we've seen some pretty high comparables around us. And again, we're pulling from the private industry around us. You know, we look at, we've looked at the, the local counties or the, the counties that we compare to. But in reality, we're pulling from the local economy here in Dubuque and the, the shop supervisor is typically much higher compensated than what our, our current one is. So we're trying to be proactive with these mechanics and shop supervisor. You know, over the next couple of years, that's, we're gonna see some changes or we're gonna see some retirements. And we just want to kind of get ahead of that and, and for what they do, how they bail us out and keep, keep the equipment running. Is very, you know, cost savings to us versus, you know, sending it out to outlying shops, truck country or whatever. Whatever shops that usually would, would work on it for an hourly fee. What they can do in-house is, has, you know, saved us a lot of money, so have, having good staff to, qualified staff to do that. You know, we have to be competitive with that, so that's why we take a look at this analysis.
Okay, so when. With your mechanic two, from your twenty-eight dollars to your thirty-two, what are you talking, like two steps, three steps?
Yeah, they have a three-step scale right now.
Three-step, okay, so when they get out of mechanic one, however, if they test out or whatever, I'm assuming they'd move into the mechanic two and then?
If there's, if they have the skills developed, it may not be right away, you know, maybe years, and they may never, we may not need to have the need for it, but they definitely, we would definitely. Do a, a job audit and look to see if they meet the, the qualifications to, for that position at that time.
Yeah, if we grab somebody who's, has been in the industry for twenty years, you know, wrenching and is, is highly efficient at heavy equipment, hydraulics and all that. You know, they're gonna progress pretty quickly, but if somebody's fairly green, you know, we're talking about setting up a certification process where we send them out to different schools. To get trained to different things, then they would work their way up through this, through the step process.
So you hire this guy with twenty years' experience, just I understand, you're gonna start him at mechanic two, because obviously he's. You're gonna start him at mechanic two, is obviously he's he knows what he's doing. And then the three steps would be like a yearly raise?
It'd be a one-year process to get to that. Yep.
So it's spread out over three years?
Actually, one year.
Because they would get a six-month.
Six-month.
Probationary.
And it gives us the ability to, you know, when when we have to advertise for these positions, we can we can advertise a range. You know, presently, we can only advertise one wage. Um it's it's helpful when we can advertise a low to high range and uh really draw the attention of people out there.
And we did invite the union representatives and and they are here on Zoom. If you have any questions for them, um they're here. We let them know we were having this discussion. Um we met with the union and their representatives on Tuesday. Um and they were in full support of our uh recommendation.
For the shop supervisor, you're talking pretty close to a fourteen thousand dollar raise, you're talking seven dollars an hour, it's over fourteen?
He's been undercompensated for quite some time.
You're talking a one-time boom or over a couple of years, just move them up that much, or what's your thoughts on that?
Um, that's stuff for discussion. We'd have to, maybe we could talk through that a little bit. Um, I I could tell you for what he what he achieves and the level he's at, he should be at it now. Um now, if we wanna kind of soften that blow and and look at stepping that a little bit, you know, we can we can have some negotiation on that and talk about that a little bit. But for what he does for the shop, um he's he well deserves that. He would be highly competitive in the in the private industry. He would, somebody would pick him up pretty quick.
I I'm aware of, obviously, if we didn't have the mechanics in the shop supervisor, all of our equipment would be going to truck country to be fixed, we would have outstanding bills. There's no doubt.
Yeah.
But I know they're they're worth their weight in gold, but they also have to be fair to everybody.
Yep.
Jay, you have any?
I'm I'm li- listening still.
Yeah, Anne, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
I guess we're looking to see if there's support. We would do a side letter of agreement um with the union. Uh we were looking at July first um to begin these, um just to for budget purposes um that we would just incorporate these if if agreed upon in Anthony's new FY twenty-three budget.
And to that, I would have a comment, which would be, um I'd like to see some of this in in writing. And I'd like to see it in terms of percentages. Absolutely, everyone wants at least a six percent raise this year. So I would like to see this in terms of overall budget impact as well. So a little more workup than this year, because I think it's it's always sensitive what raises are going to be. But I'd like to, you know, see this impact, because this discussion, while we think it's specific to four people and a future event that's gonna occur two to four years from now, we're gonna have this very same discussion next week. So I'd like to see, because it impacts all the wages. So I would like to see it be, well, there it is. Was that in the packet and I missed it?
No, we just did this up today. Um we just met with the union on Tuesday, so we didn't, we're not able to meet the the packet uh deadline for that. So this would be taking them to the top of the new scale. This, I I did incorporate what with the increase in FY twenty-three, so that would be if they just receive their three percent um negotiated increase. And then this would be per individual, so there we would recommend that all three who are currently in that mechanic because um the on classification, that they would all be moved to the mechanic two um wage scale, new wage scale. And then oh, go ahead, Anne, I apologize.
Asking about the percentage of increase.
Twelve point eight percent. Roughly, roughly thirteen percent, a little less, twelve point eight percent on seventy-seven on ninety-nine. If I had that right, to the the total.
I was going off of the.
But you said the mechanic was like a three-step basin, right?
Correct.
Yep.
Yep, we would match it with their current um scale system.
So their initial raise, it'd go from the twenty-seven twelve to twenty-eight dollars?
Well, what this is, this is going to that top step, but if if there are
That's over.
That, yep, that's what we what we have here is that as of July first, that they would move to the step three, the top step of the new proposed. So that would be the thirty-two dollars. We, I think, like you said, we can, we're open to discussion if we would like to place them at step one and then do this over a year or two as well.
I guess the uh the comment that I would would like to make sure that, you know, I think we're aware of is is our health benefits. Um so they went up over ten percent this year alone, the increase. And I do think if you compare them to the private sector, you will be very, 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 very hard pressed. Find anyone match them, in my opinion, even come come close within fifty percent. So I'd love to be wrong, but I I haven't not yet seen that. And then I'm glad we provide good benefits. But I think it's uh it's very important that management and leaders like yourself present that and make sure that they understand the benefit of those. You know, well, what my family would pay out of a out-of-pocket for a whole year is what some people pay in a month. In just a premium. So uh it it's it's a very good benefit. I think we are starting to see a shift in the private industry towards good benefits. Um, you know, I do have a few examples on just that little survey we did there, but we can we could share that um as well. But you know, the private industry, they're they're struggling to get employees as well. So they're they're giving bonuses, they're they're adding insurance, uh you know, increases uh for compensation to the employee. They're adding PTO. I mean, there's if there's a lot of changes that you didn't typically see before. You know, it used to be, uh there was never good health insurance. It might have been a good wage, but it wasn't the the insurance wasn't there. We are seeing a shift in that. Um so I, over the data I pulled, I could see that with a few different uh companies around here.
I I guess I'd like to see that in writing, in some kind of summary. I mean, we're this is a discussion that we're having with many departments. The treasurer was here. I mean, we're we're seeing this from the microphone, from the bench, um coming up and saying these these wages are are needed to be increased. Don't dispute for a minute that folks may not be compensated for what they should be, but to Supervisor Wickham's point, um you know, fifteen hundred dollar deductible is pretty common. And people feeling really positive about a five thousand dollar deductible and a fifteen hundred dollar per month payment. So I mean, the the insurance is, it's the gap maybe, maybe there are some people looking at it as as a benefit or a wage increase. But it's it is spread, it's not everybody's uh story. So I would like to have it be some of that thing, the very statement you just made, competitors. I'd like to see it in some kind of memo form, so I can compare it to the other uh presentations that are being made to us.
Yeah, we could.
Presents, it isn't worthy of an increase.
I would say also, what, you know, kind of a harbinger that, you know, that we saw a couple of years ago is when we hired um, you know, Justin. Um he was he was our mechanic that we hired a few years ago. We only probably had eight or ten applications at that time. It was pretty low amount for that mechanic position. And quite a few of them didn't have much experience and, you know, pretty pretty lowly qualified and luckily we had Justin there. But you know, when it comes to that tradesperson, specific tradesperson, it's it it's hard to draw. And we saw that a few years ago. So that's, I have some major concerns with these these next two retirements. Uh they float that shop amazingly. Um they, there's there's, we have a lot of equipment in this in this department that has to be and be maintained. And if I if I can't have that dependability, I we're we're gonna be stressed.
Anthony, I completely understand what you're saying, but we're gonna have a presentation in the next ten minutes from Sunny Press, and they're gonna tell me there are twenty-four openings. The workforce issue, I think, just needs to be, just need to, I I I admire you advocating and you're telling us directly what we need. And I'm asking that the workforce and that the the compensation issue be raised in a way that can be I can as I can read it and assess it and not respond to the quality of your presentation before me at this very moment.
I completely respect that. We'll get you some better information before you. Um you know, this really wanted to get this in front of you for discussion purposes. Yes, we need to have some follow-up to this, and we'll get you some some specific data to look at.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Anne, Jay, good? Keep moving, or need a break, or?
I'm fine. Does staff need a break?
Five minutes, but uh do we wanna do anything on Anthony's budget, or are we gonna revisit that again? I think we'd have to. You always have this awkward dance after we get done, and what are we gonna do? So the roads projects are are already approved through the five-year construction program, so you don't have to approve that today. But we did have the, you know, discussion on the capital expenditure for the airport shop. You know, I think you guys gave consensus at a previous meeting. I don't know if you needed to give an official motion today for that. That would be one, the big item there.
So I have that um at an estimate of eight hundred and sixty thousand in our capital projects.
Do we want to make a motion on that, or do we want more discussion, more information?
Anthony, are you not working up something more to get us a more detailed price on that?
We are. Um we've we've been working with an architect. Quite honestly, I wasn't I wasn't uh excited about the estimate he came up with, so we're doing some back checking around that. So um I don't have anything specific for you today, other than the estimate that we gave you in the previous work session of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars that came from a contractor that gave us a per price, uh per square foot price, plus the miscellaneous stuff that we needed to look at adding to that.
Right, and so there, for me, there is a dollar amount that I'm not, I would ask that it be trimmed back if we start to reach one point one million or one million. I mean, so I mean, there's consensus at eight sixty. I think we wanna see this go forward, but um you know, I don't know that we're ready for a motion if you don't have something specific before us.
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have, you know, I don't have bids or anything like that. I have no idea what the, you know, specific numbers are for a building yet. You know, we're still trying to figure out what that building is gonna look like, whether it's gonna be a wood frame or steel frame. Um, you know, we're looking at those two different price variables, but one way or the other, you know, we need a building there. Um but we're gonna try to be as cost-effective as possible, and um I wanna stay at that eight sixty or below if we can.
So we'd still be going out to RFPs on it?
Yes, yes.
I think there's consensus, we're just not gonna make any motions until you get all the paperwork together.
Sure. All right.
With that, Jay?
Thank you.
Did you have anything further?
No.
You're muted, Anne.
I'm saying hello to Emily and Danny on Zoom. It's a little different. It just feels like a little different protocol when your face is just right there and.
Jay made a motion.
Recession for five minutes?
Second.
A motion to second recess for five minutes, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three.
We did not see that. Uh, we do have the cost of wages, the double time that goes into wage accounts. So the COVID expense line is just our PPE and tests. And so we did not spend nearly as much this year as we did in prior fiscal years. So that was one of the large amounts of decrease. Um, another thing is I had budgeted for those twenty-four open positions. So that was, you know, twenty thousand a person of benefits that we did not utilize. Um, just some, those were the two big things that we saved on this year. Um, obviously wages are a little higher because of overtime. Per hour, but as far as we also have being short staffed, it actually does save us money in wages overall. Because we're not, sometimes we're running shorter than we would like to be with as many staff that should be on. Uh, and then also we started the fiscal year with a little more money just because of the way the transfers worked out. So that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference than we thought we'd have. So that's where the um, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction in our ask for this fiscal year comes in. So last year, we, this time of year, it was about two point four we had asked for, and we're putting that down to one point six five. So that's our twenty-two reestimate. So then getting into this upcoming fiscal year, uh, we do have the seventy-seven beds. I have budgeted for sixty-seven beds. That's a couple above our current census. That's what we're hoping to get back up to and stay at through the remodel. Uh, I'm not, I believe all three of you were on the board when we came and asked about the remodel. And you know, this is before COVID and we were so worried we're gonna have to go down to sixty-seven or seventy for census. And you know, here we are at sixty-seven. So that's what I've budgeted this year. So that's uh, the current rate is what I use, and that is right now two fifty-four eleven for the nursing facility beds. So that gets us to six point two million. And then for ICFID, we have budgeted at twenty-seven beds. Uh, so that would just be one open bed, and that's where we've been this fiscal year as well. Uh, the reimbursement rate for ICFID is four hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-five cents currently. And so that's just over four million in revenue. Uh, Medicare revenue, that includes when we have skilled, which is uh, we typically only skill our own residents to bring them home. And then Medicare B revenue, which is the therapy we provide for our residents. So it gets our total billed revenue for ten million, six hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy. Uh, the expected amount from the Board of Trustees is a hundred and twelve thousand, and that is just reimbursement for uh, my benefits and our maintenance directors' wages and benefits. And then other revenue, that's just miscellaneous things. Uh, we bill for cable. It's reimbursements for franchise fees paid to uh, black, the utility companies. They reimburse us for those because we're a county. So those are just some twenty-four thousand is the amount that we, on average, are gonna be getting in. So total revenue of ten million, seven hundred and eighty thousand roughly. Um, and then for expenditures, I just kind of like I do every year, I try to lump it into as large of, or you know, I have the detail also if you have any questions on specific line items, but there's a lot of them. So total we have budgeted for wages is six million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand. Uh, IFRS and FICA is um, one point one million, health insurance, we have one point eight um, million. So I did lower the budget for that. In previous years, I've budgeted for all positions. I think I just increased it by hopefully we get another ten this year. So that could change based on if we do get our position, full-time positions filled consistently. Uh, other employee expense, that's just gonna be your work comp, the cost of physicals, um, just some of those sort of material. And that's what, um, sorry, a hundred and one thousand dollars. Uh, cost allocation, and this is the allocation from the county for using IT personnel auditor. That's I have budgeted six hundred and eighty thousand. We don't know that number yet. Uh, just uh, I think I increased last year's by about thirty thousand, because that's what the previous year increase was. Uh, COVID, I have four hundred thousand. Again, I think we've used about thirty thousand this year in straight supplies. And that is, I just want to be, have it there if we need it, because we don't know what's gonna happen. Uh, utilities, three hundred and thirteen thousand. Our food and nutritional supplements is three hundred and forty-six. That's gone up uh, probably more percentage-wise than a lot of our other costs. And that's I, that's not shocking to me by any means. So um, ICFID assessment, that is just the five and a half percent that we paid back to Medicaid. It's part of just a pass-through. I think it's, it's with Iowa. Everyone, it's just to get funds to Iowa from federal. So that's built into our rate, our daily rate. We bill it and then we just pay it back essentially. Contracted services, that's just our era mark. We use them for laundry service still. And we have been contracting um, CNAs and some nurses. So that's in that number. That's higher than it has been in previous years. And I believe just like our medical director, just some other people that we contract out. So that's two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Okay. And then program expenses, this is going to be um, basically our sunrise and activities departments, what they use for our programming for residents. Uh, therapy, uh, again, that's a hundred and ninety-one thousand, and that is, that really fluctuates too based on our, our resident needs. So, and that's a kind of a direct offset to our medical B, uh, sorry, Medicare B revenue. So if that goes up, our revenue will go up. We kind of break even on our, on our therapy billing. Because we have to, some of our residents that don't have Med B, we have to pay that. So it kind of evens out. Uh, medical needs, again, that, that's actually up quite a bit too. And a lot of that probably is COVID-related, but I didn't code it to, when the bills come in, I don't code them directly to COVID unless I'm positive, just as far as auditing standpoint. It comes down to it, and I need the expenses when I'm doing my reporting. I can prove that we've spent this much percentage more, but I don't want to put more to the COVID line than I have to, if, just for auditing purposes. Transportation, I have that back at a hundred and eight thousand. Um, that was our previous year budget. But again, we weren't using RTA this year, and we hope to get, we will be using RTA again once our workshop starts up. So that's about the average of what we use the last years when we were using them. Uh, education is about ninety thousand. Still kept that fifty thousand dollar scholarship that we have set aside in case we have any of our CNAs or nurses want to pursue education. They can apply for a scholarship. Um, and that's, there's criteria for that. They have to get a certain grade and um, certain amount of hours and that. And then liability insurance, that's seventy-six thousand. I think I budgeted it in about ten percent increase. Uh, building and maintenance, that's just kind of all of our other maintenance, fixing equipment, fixing the building, uh, anything plumbing repair. So uh, business office, that's just gonna, about fifty-one thousand. That's some office supplies, postage, cell phone, just things that aren't uh, miscellaneous things. Environmental services, that's forty-three thousand. That's a lot of our cleaning supplies, uh, laundry supplies. And then dietary, uh, again, kitchen supplies and anything that just kind of doesn't fit into the food category and dietary, thirty-eight thousand. So uh, all in all, so our, just kind of restated this year, twenty-two versus twenty-three. Uh, for twenty-three, total revenue, I have it ten million, about ten point eight million. Expenditures thirteen point one million. So um, the need would be about two point three million to offset what we're not making in revenue. So. This I can go through if you have any specific questions. I, again, I just kind of tried to summarize it into the PowerPoint because there's a lot more lines here than there is in everything else. So I just included that if there was anything that stuck out, but I, I guess if you want me to go through it, I'm happy to, but kind of information overload at that point. So.
Good. I have about four items. If uh, I'll, I'll hit two of them and then stop. Uh, so thank you, Danny. Thank you, Emily. Getting good overview, uh, very uh, succinct. Appreciate that. Um, my first question is on COVID, and maybe Stella can jump in too. So COVID-related expenses, tell me about how that works? Do you have any reimbursement mechanisms at Sunnycrest to the federal government and/or with your Medicaid, Medicare billing? Or do those run through the county in our ARPA funds or normal funds that we've received from COVID?
So Emily probably has the total number, but uh, Sunnycrest was getting direct funding from HHS.
Okay.
In, uh, Emily, do you have that total?
Um, I, it was about eight hundred thousand. Um, so and then we got ninety-five thousand just in January. That was a phase four that I had to apply for. So we got that. Um, I have to do reporting. That's, so basically I had to prove that we're our seven hundred and ninety thousand. We spent it all on COVID. Uh, so I tracked that all separately. I have spreadsheets. I had our report due for what we used through June thirtieth. That was due, I think November thirtieth, doesn't matter. When it was due, it's done. Uh, my next one is due March thirty-first, and that's for everything through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So um, I have to provide all the data of what we received, the dates, when we spent it. It's, and I have already been notified. We're, basically they're auditing everyone. So I have it all, and I send everything to Stella. I have a COVID spreadsheet, but that's all tracked. I guess, I think independently of the county, because I'm reporting on all of that. So HHS has, they probably, they haven't covered everything, but that eight hundred thousand dollars has gone a long way. I mean, I think in our expense accounts, we only had about four hundred thousand, but that didn't include the wages and the extra staffing. Um, I thought I did have enough, and then found out like at last minute, I didn't with, with the county audit. But then I had to go through and pull out wages for the COVID unit specifically. Because initially I was just pulling out the, from one point five overtime to two point O. And, but that didn't come up to enough, so I had to actually go through and pull out, you know, three nurses or a nurse for twenty-four hours every day for this month, plus two CNN, you know, so it was a little more lengthy than I had hoped it would be. I was hoping we'd have enough. And it, like I said too, with the medical expense increase, that's another thing I can pull out if I have to. But again, didn't want to waste extra time going through every invoice, saying this could be COVID, this couldn't if it wasn't needed. Because I can substantiate my costs in other ways. So.
Okay, thank you. That's good to hear that uh, you're on top of it and we can, we can bill out some of those expenses. Um, another kind of general question is related to the cost allocation internally. We talked about that maybe last year or the year before. So kind of question for you, Emily and Stella. Has that actually been reviewed and is that a real number?
Yeah, so.
Seems high.
It does seem high, where it really um, comes down to some of the things that are allocated. The IT number would be very high because they have the most computer equipment that's supported. So those allocations heavily weight towards Sunnycrest.
Has it ever been reviewed?
Yes.
I know I've seen with claims that we actually spend money to go over that, but.
Yeah, we, on an annual basis, have that prepared by a company called, I believe, Cost Allocation Services. Um, each department that is allocated is allocated on a different basis. So you know, you may take, um, this is an example, and I don't know if this is the way it's allocated. So if you take the auditor, it could be allocated their services on the number of employees, because they're processing payroll or on the volume of checks cut. I'm, I'm not sure which metric they pick for each department, but each department is, is allocated on a metric to the other departments. And so Sunnycrest, having a lot of employees, a lot of computer equipment, things like that, it's heavily weighted toward them.
Okay. My last question or thought on that is if certainly in Sunnycrest, this would be in your, your camp. Um, is there any way to audit or flag that and say, hey, object? Object to your cost allocation calculations and.
I think Emily, yeah, I think Emily has kind of done that. At least to me.
Yes, I brought it up. I don't like the number. So, but.
Maybe pass just actually than a process. So pass just, you know, I object, but then there's a process for remedy. And in what is that? So it's been on my list for probably three or four years. So I'd be interested in what that remedy is, whether it be an outside review or audit. Um, what it does, it's just a superficial drag on uh, the county contribution.
Yeah.
To the tune of six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I'm sure there's some there. Don't get me wrong. We do good work. But if you were running Sunnycrest, you'd probably immediately eliminate that expense and hire people.
Probably very true. One of those things, um, it's probably allocating general funds, and we, our contribution um, to Sunnycrest comes out of general supplemental. So we're um, providing funding for benefits to Sunnycrest. Um, so that's part of it too.
So that also just on my cost report that I have to submit every year, that's a frequent question. Like what is this number? And I don't, you know, like, so I've had to, you know, I explain it the best I can. It is an outside firm. But that goes into our cost report, which in turn increases our reimbursement. But on the flip side, that's a number that they're like, well, i- it drives up our cost per day, which is good but bad when you have to explain it. And they're like, that, that's a lot of money for that. You know, how, I don't know. It's, it's hard for me to explain it to an outside party as well. So.
What I normally stage, you just have to meet Nathan, Stella, you know, Dawn. You have to meet all these people. They're worth it. You guys don't get the money?
Not quite.
You have anything else? I, I have two or three other items, but I'll defer, but I don't stack them all up at time. And?
Thank you. Yes, I have a, a couple of questions. Um, the first one would be Emily about the utilities. You know, can you speak to the, the, the trustees make the improvements, right? So to the building, if they're gonna put in LED lights, or they're going to use solar panels. I mean, there's, a- and I think they do a great job. I'm not, you know, not in any way suggesting they're not. They're very proactive. But then the utility cost is part of your twenty-three budget. Is that correct?
Correct. That's an operational cost. So I don't know if you've ever seen the lease with the trustees. It's rather old. Um, it goes down to. Oh, no, I think it automatically renews. I, I truly think I'm supposed to be charging the county ten dollars a year, or the other way around. But I don't do that. That's in the lease. It's a ten dollars a year rent. Um, but, so it's pretty gray, you know, major building repairs are paid by the trustees. Minor is paid by um, the bor- operations. Now, that's up to just me and Joe to determine what's major and minor. I mean, there's not a dollar. So there are some two hundred dollar bills that Joe thinks it's a trustee thing, and there's some thousand dollar bills that he's like, no, that's more of a, i- it's really kind of at Joe's discretion. And I mean, I, I typically, if there's something that I don't agree with, we talk about it. This should be, but it's such a gray area. It doesn't say everything under a thousand is operations and over isn't. You know, it's, to you and me, what's major and minor? I, it's, so I do know more, the building repairs were higher this year than they have been in previous years. And I guess I'm, a lot of that goes back to the remodel, I guess, because though they're minor, we are also putting on Band-Aids of stuff that if the remodel would have happened, we wouldn't be fixing. You know, so there have been a lot more smaller bills going through this year. Just, we're fixing as we go, that we really hope that once the remodel's done and we have all new um, mechanical equipment, then we're good. So.
Well, I appreciate the answer, because I just wanted to know how the conversation happens. And it sounds like it's fairly organic, that there's not a chart or a list or something. And, and, and I'm comfortable with that. And you know, I'm sure you'll bring it to us if you need to have some of that gray area greater defined, but good luck with that, really. You know, it's, it's an operation that is a hybrid. So um, and, and then I guess to follow up on that a bit, because it's unique and it's our own. This is our long-term care center, our family. Um, do we have the ability to pursue other priorities that the county has, like local foods? You know, there's a, our county has a food policy council that really works hard to try to have people look at using locally sourced foods. So you know, uh, it, do, you know, and I, I really relish that you have the garden in the back. And I'm not suggesting that we should be requiring you to grow every tomato that uh, your food service might use. But you know, that the kitchen needs, but is there something that we can maybe just continue to think about that? How can we as a, a large institution or large dollars, do we have any ability to purchase more from farmers markets or from locally sourced foods? Um, maybe we can recapture some costs, maybe not, but it, it works toward another goal that the county might have.
I, I think that um, that the food service, as far as the food goes in, I think that's something we have to look at in the next year. Um, just to see, obviously with, and the increase that we have seen, I, I think that's something we're gonna have to look at as a whole. Um, not just being able to um, maybe purchase some from town. We have been very fortunate when we do have special occasions, like having, you know, going to Fenzels and buying sweet corn and things like that. Um, and as long as they're willing to bill us, I don't see any issues with that. We just have to have a policy for those types of foods. Um, because we wouldn't want to purchase things that then we would have a foodborne illness outbreak. You know, so there are some DIA requirements to that, um, and food procurement that we have to make sure that we watch. You know, but it, it isn't, I don't think it's out of a realm to, to do that through, you know, some of our local type things. Like I said, like Fenzels and um, we, like I said, we've bought some through, through there and, and not, not many places, I wouldn't say. But I would think that that's something we need to look at this year to make sure that we're getting um, our best, you know, price too.
So, well, and again, best price, of course, but you know, when you're looking at that two point three million dollar county. Yep. Happy to, to be there. We, you, you and we are the same, right? So I don't draw a big distinctions between that, but we can, we could as a large, um, a large institution lead in purchasing some things that might be locally sourced. So it's just a conversation that I'd like to have, and I know the folks on the Food Policy Council would, would love to have it too. At one time, um, years ago, we had a um, a cook in the kitchen at Sunnycrest who was gonna be on this, on that Food Policy Council to be at the table, and they do have some openings there. So maybe it's a can, a more direct connection. Um, I might suggest you need another to-do thing for um, folks. But my, my last question is about workforce, pretty typical. What can I do? And to that, I'd go back to the chair that, you know, maybe today isn't the discussion about that. But um, you know, that's just something that I, we all are trying to work on finding the solution to those twenty-four spots, not just for Sunnycrest, but for um, our, our county overall.
I, I think that's something we're gonna be working on for a little bit of time, in, in various creative ways.
Yeah. I don't know that people understand how much we pay when we, when we hire that agency, as you say in the lingo, right? That you, you, you hire through a contract service for a, a CNA. Um, would, you know, only wish we could pay our employees the amount of money we pay to the agency.
You know, Ian, speaking of that, our, our, our leading age, our affiliate is looking at even, you know, the amount of pricing that they even charge us, and that's something that's going through the legislators and things. Um, I, I, I don't want to, you know, get into as far as the wages too terribly much, but that will be something that we will definitely need to look at. And I think that's been, you know, I, I haven't been on all of these meetings to watch this, but I did listen in a little bit to Anthony's and that, that may be something we have to look at, um, to see where we're at, you know, as far as that goes. But I, I know that we also have a union and it does make it a little bit different. So um, that, that would be something that I know we probably don't want to bring up at every single budget meeting you have today. Uh, but that would definitely be something that I, I think that, you know, we have to be creative also. I'm not, I'm not denying that. I think, um, we have to make sure that we have a great place to work. Um, and you know, maybe to that sort, I don't know if the county's ever um, done this before, where they uh, take your whole benefit package, not just, you know, necessarily what your strict wage is, but what the wage would be if we just paid you everything that went into the benefits. I don't know, as a snapshot to each person. I don't know, you know, so they understand. And, and how do we reiterate that to new people that we'd like to get here, you know? So a little bit of creativity, I guess, too.
Right. Well, you know, and good points, and I think the, some of those things have been raised maybe in my three years too. But um, I guess I'll just try to end my questions on a positive note, which is that it is, it's, it's, it's encouraging that we're actually having that part of the conversation, instead of the crushing numbers about positivities. And, and you know, that, the past two years of our lives where it was just all such an emergency. So at least I, I get the sense that we can start to look around it. They're all brakes in the systems, but at least we can be looking at more than physical emergencies. So thank you for keeping everybody safe and well. That really matters. I know you deal with positives. And you know, I'm sure our vaccination decision is gonna play in. So I, I appreciate what you're doing. Both you and Emily, you watch the numbers well. And I've no doubt you and Stella are in frequent conversation.
The uh, maybe to tag on to the uh, issue related to workforce, so kind of uh, just a statement and then maybe a request. Um, my observation is a lot of turnover, and it seems like all the turnover positions are, usually have a, a P in front of them for part-time. So is there, so then maybe my request is, if you're onto one of them, maybe, you know, what would solve that if it's an issue? Um, I hear still good reports about your service. I know the inspections we have, we pass. I know people are doing a good job, so, so maybe you can just live with that level of turnover. Um, but, but if not, uh, I'd be open to some of those remedies that might be in changing their status of employment and/or the wage. So might be a good work session if you've got some ideas there.
I will definitely get some information and we'd love to have a work session about that, uh, to discuss all those. And um, I guess what we, I don't want to live with the turnover, Jay. I feel like our residents deserve consistent staffing. So that would be something that I would like to be better than the nursing home down the road and turnover. Okay? And that would be a great thing to look at this next year. And um, I will definitely get some stuff together and look at all the people as far as the turnover goes and try to find the best um, way to, to see why exactly it is that they're leaving to, to work on that.
But, and we do have, you know, we do have a separate bargaining unit. So, and uh, one time dream was that all the unions and all the professionals would all be at the same rate. And uh, I, that was squashed, I think, in the first uh, budget meeting we had. But uh, so you, we can do individuals. So in that, that, you know, there are individual agreements. So don't hold yourself to any, some sort of set perceived standard or notion. All of our union contracts are different. Is that correct? So that gives you a little more latitude. Um, my last question would be for Emily and maybe Stella. So on your one budget sheet, you talked about the enterprise fund balances. And uh, congratulations, they're very precise or very low. And so statist, I mean, so, so I guess on, on a budget vantage point, your fund balance at the end of June is scheduled to be a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. So, and so that's the set one, and is that just a budgetary number? And then the follow-up question is, do you have a, a separate dedicated balance sheet that actually indicates your actual balance?
Okay, so how we've done it with the supplement, Sunnycrest, we ask for this amount of money, and, but it's only to get us to zero. We, the idea is never to get us to have a balance. So, so last fiscal year, my last budget, I was supposed to end around zero. So that was our ask. Well, I'm, we probably took a transfer in May of twenty twenty, and then to get us to zero, but then I brought in more revenue in June, which left with us a two hundred and eleven thousand dollar balance. So I always budget as if we're gonna end at zero again, while this time one thirty-nine.
You have, that might answer my question. How many transfers do you normally do?
Usually only like two. So far this year, we've only taken like thirty-two thousand. So it, it's whatever month that we're gonna be negative, I email Megan in the auditor's office and say, you know, please transfer to get me to zero. So I think last year it was two or three. I'm sorry, what?
I'm impressed but skeptical on that. So two bet, two fund transfers on thirteen million? Um, that's pretty good if you can get that to that low, um, considering your accounts receivable and, you know. Anyway, so I think you've answered my question. Um, there is not a separate balance sheet for Sunnycrest?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. You've answered my question. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
I commend you, Danny and Emily, for doing what you do up there with the limited staff. And uh, basically you're just saying you took two draws from the county so far this year, right, Emily?
Just one this year so far.
Or just one? Okay. All right. Ninja accountant. Doing well. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions to ask.
No, I don't either.
And did you have any more, anything further?
I guess, just kind of a, a record-keeping, you did have an ARPA request that we talked about a little bit when we were talking about the remodel. Does anybody in the room know the status of the ARPA request? I mean, I know it's not been funded, but I just, I don't know if it's going forward, being revised. Where it isn't, I don't think set to be, to be, everyone, other departments have been. Where it isn't, I don't think, set to be to be everyone, other departments have been making their presentations about their ARPA requests or some of them. So I just didn't know where we are with that. Does anybody on the team know this?
We 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 have a work session at ten forty five on Monday. That's actually external, so are you internal or external?
Internal.
Internal.
Internal, okay, uh, internal enterprise fund. Um, so.
I think the question uh, would maybe be to Danny, is there an intent to move forward with that project at this time?
Well, the portion of the request is part of the renovation. Um, so that portion absolutely, the second part of the request. Um, yes, I would say, um, so I could definitely not be ready at ten forty five on Monday. But I could certainly find a time to be ready to come down and present.
I'm I'm, I was wrong, that was external, so.
Okay.
I was wrong.
Yeah.
So anytime you want to talk about that four point eight million, we probably should get chatting.
Okay, let's do that.
And you know, maybe it's, I still think regardless of the cost, we should be listening to the content. Because whether it's a four point eight million dollar, um, you know, a grant that we make to Sunny Crest. Or it's that we, it's a discussion, like what's the need, why is it there, why did you propose it? And that that is a conversation I don't want to just shrug off because so having you present that when you're ready. I don't know that there's a, you know, a great urgency to next week, but I just don't want to assume that that's a conversation we shouldn't have.
So I I apologize, um, I just need to initiate that time and ask to be on a work session for that. Because I, um, and I shouldn't assume things, I apologize for this. Um, but I thought when we presented our information as far as um, gave it to everybody, but I will go through that. And I will ask for a work session at a later date and we'll we'll go through all of that ask. Because a a portion of that ask is um, imperative and very much so. Uh, would go with the COVID funds and also um, what we're trying to accomplish through that American Rescue Act for sure. I mean, for sure, one hundred percent of the HVAC and the renovation to those things would go to that. Um, I definitely think the other portion of it that we would like to see happen. Um, you know, I can, I can also present that, but I I'd like to present it as, you know, kind of two. We understand we're probably not going to get a full four point eight million, there's a lot of money people are asking for here. But I will, I will put something together and I will be down.
That'd be great.
Uh, yeah, if anybody would like to take action on the um, contribution for FY twenty three.
The two point three.
Yep, the two million three twenty nine, and I guess the FY twenty two reestimate would be actually lowering that one. Um, it is almost exactly the same, I believe, two point three in our current budget.
So I'll take a stab at this. I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty two reestimate of county contribution of one million six hundred and fifty hundred thousand dollars.
And I will second that. Have a motion in a second to approve the fiscal year twenty two amended budget. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries.
And then I would make a a second motion to approve for fiscal year twenty three budget, the county contribution as presented, which is. Two point three hundred twenty nine million dollars.
I will second that.
Have a motion in a second to approve the fiscal year twenty three budget for Sunny Crest of two million three hundred and twenty nine thousand. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much, Danny, and thank you very much, Emily.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, have a great day.
You too. You're uh, no, let's, sure, take one, they're good. Our last work session will be with the county library.
Thank you.
You're back, here, do the third one, we can sit around. It's over there, all right.
Amanda, it's Ann. Can you just, we're going to see each other tomorrow, oh no, it's on Zoom too. I was going to say, you give it to me then, but that's another Zoom meeting, so sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine, I can certainly email it to you. Um, it's a copy of our program calendar for this current month and our most recent brochure, just a quick overview of the. Of the library. Uh, so as you can see, I'm here from the library district. Uh, if you want to go to the next slide really quick, Dawn or Stella, sorry, wasn't sure who was doing uh, slides. So I'm Amanda Vasquez, this is my first time before you speaking and uh, talking about the library and uh, what we have going on there. I'll do a little introduction of myself, uh, since I'm here. I've been director at the Dubuque County Library District since October of twenty twenty one, so it's only been a few months. Uh, but I have been in libraries for about twelve years. I've worked at the Orange City Public Library for most of that and was anything from a clerk, so checking in books up to being the library director there. That's my hometown. I live in Asbury with my two kids since May of twenty nineteen. That's when we moved here, so I could take the assistant director's job. Um, I recently got my master's in library science from the San Jose State University. Um, and I'm very active at the state and national level within libraries. So I am on the executive board of the Iowa Library Association and chair their intellectual freedom committee. And I'm on the executive board of the American Library Association's Intellectual Freedom Roundtable, and I'm a member of their governing uh, council as well. Uh, you heard intellectual freedom there a couple of times, that's a big passion of mine. And so I work chairing in the Intellectual Freedom Committee. Um, I do a lot of support for other Iowa libraries and librarians who are dealing with um, book challenges. So there have been a lot of those of the last few months. Uh, so I've been very busy working on that and will continue to be busy, especially considering some of the uh, proposed legislation here at the state level. Next slide, thanks. So the Dubuque County Library District is quite unique in Iowa. There are about five hundred and forty public libraries in Iowa, which is a lot. Uh, however, there are only three library districts. Uh, so it's Dubuque County, uh, Scott County and Woodbury County. The library reports to a nine-member board of trustees, and they are a governing board. So they are the ones who set our budget, who set our policies, um, and are responsible for, are responsible for the library. Four of those board uh, members are appointed by the supervisors. Uh, we have two that are appointed by the city of Asbury and then one each. Uh, appointed by the cities of Farley, Upworth and Piasta. Uh, Holy Cross is the only member city that does not have a seat on the library board. And uh, as the slide says, it's uh, proportionate based on population and Holy Cross is small. Uh, next slide. Thanks. Uh, so that first line I is carried over from last year, and actually I think leases is not the right term here. Um. We do not own any of our properties, uh, we are tenants in those properties and those city, the cities provide the space for us to have a branch in their community. So we rent a small portion of the library space from the city of Asbury for our staff offices. Uh, and reimburse and pay for the um, utilities, cleaning, those kinds of the, and for the actual space, use of that space. But the act, the library space for collections for the public is provided by each of the cities. So the city of Piasta, we have an agreement with uh, NICC and share a library space with them. And we reimburse NICC for the staff member that does the county library business there for us. In Farley, we are currently without a branch. And we are operating solely out of the council chambers. We have some shelves that an employee built that we unlock and roll apart and set up tables and chairs and bring our laptops every. Every couple of days and set up for very limited service. Uh, but like I said, we lost our space in the Draxler Middle School, and this is what's keeping us there at all for now. We do receive uh, support from the county, which provides with the HR support, financial and payroll services. And this is uh, as laid out in Iowa Chapter three hundred and thirty six. So here I have a few years worth of uh, some very basic statistics. Uh, as you can see, our registered users have been declining uh, for the last couple of years, which coincides with just a general. Uh, decline in visits, uh, primarily due to the pandemic. Uh, we do remove registered users at when they have, I believe, three years of no active use in the library. So it's not like we're counting folks who signed up ten years ago but aren't actually using the library anymore. Our visits have also been quite significantly impacted. Uh, in FY twenty, we were closed for about two months. So we were closed in March, well, primarily April and May, we did reopen, and we have been open since, but our visits have been quite low. Um. Making sure, oh, I do have uh, more month statistics, so excuse me. In January twenty twenty, we had about five thousand visits. In January twenty twenty one, we had seventeen hundred visits. And in January twenty twenty two, we had twenty five hundred visits, so we're still much lower than we were pre pandemic. We are continuing to offer a lot of programs, uh, so as I showed on the screen up here, our library programs are staying quite high. We're keeping our programmers very busy. Um, we are offering both in-person and virtual programming. So for example, uh, we took registration for craft club and then our staff pack bags for those people who registered. And then we have a week where they can come and pick up those supplies, and then they can join the Zoom program to do whatever the craft is, whatever the activity is from home. We also have some other programs that don't require registration but are also available on Zoom. So we're trying to make sure that the folks who really need to get out of the house and are comfortable coming into the library for programs are able to do that. And those who are still more cautious or just find it easier to join by Zoom that they're able to do that as well. Our program attendance, uh, along with program numbers is staying. I I'm pleased with our program numbers and our staff FTE. We've been pretty comfortable at the eleven point five-ish uh, range for the last several years. Um, during the pandemic, we were offering curbside service. So when if someone wasn't comfortable coming into the library but wanted to get materials, they could place holds. We would walk them out to a cart or to their car for them to come in and so they wouldn't have to come into the library. Um, the virtual programs, we did some virtual registration for new library cards. We also shifted some of our collection focus from physical materials to digital materials. Because as I'll show on the next slide, we had quite an increase in that as well. We're going to continue with both in-person and virtual programs, at least through the summer. We kind of reassess seasonally, uh, my program staff and I just had a conversation. Basically, when Carnegie Stout decided that they were no longer doing in-person uh, programs in January. And we felt that our populations were, you know, still comfortable coming and uh, our my staff felt comfortable masking and providing those in-person programs. So we decided to stick with that. Our collection continues to grow, uh, so we have about ten thousand more physical items at the end of. These numbers are from the end of twenty twenty one, but or yeah, from twenty twenty one. So we have about ten thousand more physical items, but our usage is on the decline for physical, which fewer visits, fewer checkouts, that makes sense. Our eBooks and audiobooks have been continuing to grow. We have approximately ninety one thousand eBook and audiobooks available for our patrons. Most of those are through a consortium uh, that we is managed by the state library. And as you can see, the use of those has really significantly grown. So we were at about twenty thousand circulations per year on those pre pandemic, and that increased to thirty, over thirty three thousand. For the la, for last of a school year. Um, part of, oh, sorry, actually, no, that's fine. Uh, like I said, we did divert some additional funds from what would have been physical materials to digital materials. The cost of that is, it is a little harder to sustain those virtual materials. So the average cost of a hardcover fiction book in twenty twenty one was twenty seven dollars. And I actually went and looked at um, one of the Amazon, or one of the New York Times bestsellers from, I think, last week is the Midnight Library. If I were to buy that on Amazon, if any person without our uh. The discounts that we get from our vendors, if someone were to buy that on Amazon, that'd be twenty seven dollars. We could buy that for our collection at that rate or at a reduced rate through one of our other vendors. But if we were to buy that same eBook, a single copy of that eBook, it would again be twenty seven dollars, but at the end of one year. That disappears, so we are virtual, our digital materials are really leased. And they either cost a lot more than a physical copy or they have pretty restrictive terms. So whether that's, you can only circulate it for one year or twenty six circulations, whichever comes first, or two years and fifty two, or you only get the one year. Um, so we don't own those materials in the same way, but there is a a very high demand for that. We also have very high usage, right, just generally across the state. So like I said, we're part of a statewide consortium, so I can go in and see that we're in usually the top fifteen uh, in usage. And that is even relative to cities like West Des Moines, Ames and Ankeny. So those are a lot of, there are a lot of libraries that are participating in this consortium. And we have very high usage, uh, which we are very happy with. We're we're very pleased people are using our e-resources, they do just cost us a bit more. We're lucky to be able to buy into this consortium through the state library because that does get us a lot of content for a low price. But we also purchase materials specifically for only our patrons that are not shared with the whole consortium, based on our patron interest and holds and things like that. Here's some of the resources that we have available at the library. Uh, some of these are provided by the state, some of them we buy at a reduced uh, cost through the state. Some we purchase and some are supported by our friends of the library group. So ancestry dot com is the genealogy resource that we have, and the friends of the library pay for that for us uh, every year, and for that we are very grateful. Uh, the grant seeking database, the school career and veterans assistance, uh, those are provided by the state library. eBooks and audiobooks are, we purchase through the state library, but the rest we provide on our own. So one late lately, one addition that we have made lately is consumer reports online. We know that people find that to be a well-respected and trustworthy resource. And so we uh, recently added that to our collections. We have language learning and academic databases, a lot of school support and also. Local and national newspapers for folks to use in addition to those print ones that we have in the in the branches. Next. Uh, here, again, just a quick overview of some of the services that we have, a lot of the things that you would expect to see in a library, books, CDs. But we also have some uh, wireless hotspots that we were able to add a few years ago, and we find those to be incredibly helpful. They are very popular with our patrons. We currently have ten uh, hotspots that we loan out for a week at a time. Uh, the next item, it says overdue, we are overdue fine free on nearly all items, and hotspots are one of the only things that we still charge fines for. Just because we, they are in such short supply and such high demand. Um, we are trying to bring our maker space back up into uh, high use. It was one of those things that we said, we're going to launch this really heavily in March of twenty twenty. And then that did not happen, so we have maker spaces in each of our communities with, you know, things like iPads and 3D pens and 3D printers and uh, button makers and all kinds of fun things. Uh, we also have a game and puzzles collection that our friends at the library seeded. Uh, figured it was a nice cold winter day activity for all of uh, our patrons. Up here, I have the FY twenty total income per capita comparison for all of the libraries in Dubuque County. And uh, our. Per capita that we charge for per 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 person is lower than the thirty five, forty seven. per capita that we charge for, per, per, per person is lower than the 35, 47. And I believe it was 3250 at that time, but each of these numbers include not just city contributions, but also state grants, donations, any charges that they would have brought in. So it's their total income per capita. As you can see, Dubuque County lags, we have been in the bottom 10% of the state of, for per capita costs. And we expect to continue that, but just as an FYI, we like to throw this, to throw this in.
Good work so far.
Thanks.
Short of, sort of, I haven't found the number for our overall budget yet, but that's probably not your fault. That's probably mine. So doing the math roughly, so maybe, maybe we'll start with the high level. What is the ask from the county? Is it under or over a million?
It's under.
And we have that number.
It's 651.
651.
I think $5.50.
My memory is that comes out of our rural service levy. And that, is that 100% of our rural service levy? Let me rephrase it. 100, 651 is all from rural service. Is there any general basic? So that's it. So what you're doing is you're dividing roughly 40,000 population by 651. You're coming up with that. No, so.
651 is Dubuque County's contribution.
Oh, so there's additional.
That comes from each of the member cities, yes.
Sure. Well, how about the per capita? Is that basically non-City of Dubuque? With some other variables? 100,000 people in the county, 60,000 are in the city, they don't. Down to 40.
Yes. So the, the, the people, the entities that provide funding in the county of Dubuque are Dubuque County, the cities of Asbury, Upworth, Farley, Piastah and Holy Cross. So we set a per capita rate, which is for this coming year, $33.50. And then we multiply that by the population, the official US Census populations of each of those entities.
The mall town pays.
The agency.
We just had the discussion this morning. And it's like, they have seven, nine people in town, maybe $2,300.
Yes, so the, so the agency is a separate organization. So there's the Dubuque County Library District and you can buy into the, by referendum, you, a city can join the library district. And they would come in at a 33.50 rate for this next coming fiscal year. There is also, and that would allow that city to have a branch in their community. If you, if a city does not contribute any money through contracting for services with a specific community, like, like the city of Dubuque, or they don't have their own library, they are ineligible for library service. So they cannot buy, you know, an individual cannot go and just buy library service at one of our member libraries. So each city can either join the library district or they can join the agency, which is an agreement between these four cascades, Dubuque, Dyersville and Dubuque County, where a community can join the library agency. It is a reduced rate. I believe it's $29 per capita. That goes up a dollar per year, actually. And so that allows their community members to have library service, but at a reduced rate. But they do not, they wouldn't be able to have a branch in their community.
And that goes through their city property taxes, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
I, I, I believe the number that was presented there for this 21 is our rural population, rural services population divided by that budget.
Yes.
I don't think that number is other.
So we did have a kind of significant increase to our, our budget, based on the way that we calculate, which is by census number. So when the 2020 census was announced, we get to start charging those, all the cities and the county based on that new population number. So I believe all but one of the communities, including rural Dubuque County, did see an increase to their population. And so based on that, the library is also receiving an increase by multiplication, by logic multiplication. I believe that it was about an 8% overall increase to our budget. So it was, I believe our budget this current year was right, right at $1 million. And the total for this coming FY23 would be 1,079,000 and, and change. Some of the, where we're putting a lot of that increase, always there's an increase to wages. We recently switched to a new integrated library system. So that's our computer system that we use for managing all of our patron information, all of our item data, all of our checkouts, those kinds of things. And that, we had been on that same system, previous system for about 20 years and decided it was time to make a switch to something more modern. And that has a higher rate, a higher cost at about $20,000 a year as opposed to 14. Like I mentioned with wages, we're still, we haven't come to a total agreement with the bargaining. So we'll see how that goes, but we did budget for an increase. Part of our new strategic plan is a marketing push. And so we'll likely contract for some services there. We know we have a bit of an identity issue. We're often confused with Carnegie Stout and them for us as well. And also in education and training for staff. And part of that is due to my negotiations when I was accepting the position, but also the, yeah, the, the various library staff that we have. Who are all listed here. We have a couple of vacancies right now. We had, so the library director, Mike, before me, he retired in October. And I have yet to replace the assistant director position. We have one full-time position currently vacant. And we're looking at applications on Monday, actually. We had kind of an unexpected resignation. One of our part-timers was offered a full-time job. So we're interviewing for that position next week. And I have one more full-time employee who tomorrow is their last day. They are also retiring. So we have had quite a bit of turnover in the last couple of months, but I think retirements are, you know, they're respected and that's just the way things are. We aren't struggling so much with, with turnover, but we'll see how hiring goes. As I mentioned, some past year highlights, we transitioned to a new library system. And so we went from our old system to Koha, which is technically open source. So we contracted the company for service and we had some additional. We want sort of a better version of the library catalog to improve our patrons' experience. There are a lot of kind of really high-tech things that it does that I could tell you all about, but you might find boring. We created a new strategic plan last year as well. And we, because we were going through such transition in leadership, we decided to contract for that as well. We left the Drexler School in Farley and we have been working with the city of Farley to find a new branch location. That's ongoing. We contracted the FEH Design, who did community meetings, site analysis, architecture, architects recommendations at the end of 2021. This coming year. We're working on a few projects. The Dubuque Community School District, the Carnegie South Public Library and Dubuque Community, or Dubuque County Library District are all partnering to provide all secondary students in the Dubuque Community School District with library access with, by use of their school ID cards. So they will be able to come into either of our branches and, or either of our, any of our libraries, so our five libraries and their one library, and check out physical materials with their school ID. Or use our online resources. And this is a supplement to the school library offerings. We're in the middle of wrestling with data at this point, but they'll continue to, they'll just send that information to us, the school will, and then they'll be eligible in our system. We're going to keep working for, looking for a new library branch in Farley. And just, we're kind of in this between point where we finished one process and we need to figure out what our next step is right now. We'll be implementing our new strategic plan. It's a five-year plan. And we'll be looking at re-accrediting through the state library, which has implications for our funding and some other things. But that's every three-year process. That's what I have. Any other questions?
Thank you, Amanda. Great presentation. The library is in good hands. So I'm, I was happy to be part of the strategic planning. And every year I, when the presentation occurs, I'm always stunned by how, how low the, the rate is and how high the need is in our county. You know, I guess this is more comment than question, but the library was central to my entire family. And I think our individual personal success, growing up in Asbury, I mean, the library was critical. And I would, I, I, I'm sorry that there are children in our county who don't have access to the county library. And I don't, there just doesn't seem to be a good, a good solution to this. So, you know, if you come up with that suggestion, I'm happy to, happy to try to make that happen, both privately, personally and, and as a supervisor. But, you know, those individual hotspots for wireless, how much are those individually and how, how many more would you need to make a difference?
Oh, so we, we have 10 of them. The total cost for those is about $400 a month. We get a really good rate through Verizon. We considered actually switching to a different vendor through another donation text, I'm not sure if you're familiar. But the coverage wasn't going to be as good. There was a big dead zone out in the western side of the county. And we figured even if we could save some money, it's not meeting our mission of providing that access to our patrons. They kind of come and go in waves and it really depends on which branch we are at, that whether they, you know, are on the shelf for terribly long. I think that we could easily have another five or 10 of them. But it, yeah, that was something that was funded initially, I believe, by the friends of the library as well. And so that first year was, was funded by them. Yeah, we're happy to provide that wireless access for folks, especially, we do leave the wifi on at all of our branches 24/7. So anyone who needs to come in and do whatever it is they need to do, they can do that whether we're open or not, because we're not open all the time. But those wireless hotspots are a good option. It's just hard with the one-week checkout and the fact that we do still charge fines for those. Now, if you can't come in, or if you're trying to plan it around a trip, it doesn't always quite work out the way that we want it to, but our patrons might want it to.
Right. And tomorrow we'll be meeting to talk about the city of Farley. I think Ed Raver is going to be joining us as well. And it's been working on that issue on our, our behalf as supervisors, so.
We've been very happy to have him and his, his depth of knowledge has been really, really useful to us. So, thank you.
So if there's anything that you want to share in advance of tomorrow that other supervisors should know, I would just give you a minute or two to do that, if you want.
Oh, sure. So the city of Farley, like I said, contracted the FEH. The county library did make a contribution towards that. So the total cost was 24,000. We contributed six. And we recouped about half of our contribution from a state library LSTA grant. So we were happy to get that. And we held five public meetings. Did, which resulted in a lot of, a lot of public input. And we have a lot of sketches of possibilities for different properties where that could. Not that they were properties that were available or for sale, but it was, hey, we looked at the county website and we could see that there it, the library, the size that we need would fit on this property. And what would that look like? And what would the cost be? And what are community members interested in? And there was a pretty good consensus for a location of Farley community. Not necessarily from the city, because this was more of a recommendation to the city. But the, I, the most popular idea was to tear down the old lumberyard across the street from the Farley City Hall and build a new library branch there. That would cost, based on FEH's estimate, about three and a quarter million dollars. Which is a lot of money for all of us, I, I know. And so at this point, we've finished that initial process. The community survey is still open and, but that information has been presented to the city council of Farley. At this point, like I said, we're in a little bit of an in-between space where we need to, there are a couple of things that I think we need to do. One is find a better temporary home for the library than a couple of plywood boxes that we open and close twice a week. And there are some ideas. We have some ideas, but we just need to actually get to an action point on those. But regardless, that would, those would have some costs, some startup costs. When we were in Drexler, the furnishings and all of the shelving were provided by the school. So one of the big costs we would have is wherever we go temporarily, we would need to provide some, to, to find some shelving. And I have some leads on some used, currently sitting in shell, in storage shelving. So hopefully that won't be too significant, but those would be some costs that are not currently budgeted for. And since we don't really know what our next step is going to be, what the timeline is for this kind of thing, it's hard to start budgeting for that. Yeah, we're hopeful that things will continue moving. There's a lot of community support and we know that it's a priority for the city. But we are not the city's only priority. We know that, but it could be interesting being, you know, talking to people who have a lot of priorities. But you're like, but this is my one priority. So we're getting along. We're getting there. It'll be, it'll take a little while, but.
Thank you for giving that status to the three. So we're all know together and I'll look forward to our conversation tomorrow.
Yep, for a couple more questions. So, bud, I'm on your website here in 2018, in, it was recently defined. So let me check the map. But do you know either seller, do you know your total budget? Or on the revenue side? So we're contributing, you have a number of 651, is that the sheer number?
That would be next year's number.
I was trying to find that. I couldn't find that in the folder.
I'm just looking. I don't think it's in the folder. That is my fault.
Yeah, I was trying to find that. So 651, and then is this the entire library budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have contributions from your other city, which is probably the big one, it's 3 something. 396, okay. And so if it's a whole million, it's a million something, so roughly we're 65% of your budget. So that was my first question is what other contributions, what numbers they have in there. Okay, thank you. That, that helps. My other question is kind of more from a user vantage point. So I have my library card in my wallet, a few cards I do. But whereas I asked this, where can I use this? And I, you know, I know the branches you have here. Can I use this in diary room?
Yes.
And I use this in Cascade?
Yes.
And I use this at the, on these, on these cell?
Yes. That is.
Amazing.
It's part of a state program, actually. So this was one of the first ladies of the state of Iowa number of years ago, was very interested in a more collaborative way of library service. So there's what's called the Open Access Program. And libraries that participate, you can use your library card, really, you can take that to my hometown in Orange City and get a library card there. You wouldn't use that actual card. Different libraries have different policies, but there's reciprocal agreement and that includes the interlibrary loan service as well. So, yeah, like my mom who lives in Orange City, she stayed with me for a few months here, but she's got a library card here. And that's something we can do because of that Open Access Program. But yes, so you can use that, you can, you can, as a rural Dubuque County or Dubuque County Library District resident, you can go to most public libraries in the state and use the materials that are in their collection.
Very good. Thank you. Melissa's just coming. Good job in keeping such a high level of standard with such a low per capita rate.
Yeah, we have a great staff and we have good communities. We have a lot of really great support. And so, yeah, everyone always wishes they had more money. And of course, we wish we had more money too. But we realize that we are working within the confines of, you know, some smaller cities' budgets. And that the cost of library service is not insignificant for them. And it's not insignificant for the county either. And that the cost of library service is not insignificant for them, and it's not insignificant for the county either. So.
Do you have? Zoom, can I take? I did ask you a question about, the taxes, you are married, but.
Are you married solid for us?
The city is charged so much for cap, for capita that is paid by the city to the library, city, not on each person's property.
Oh, not on each person, okay, thank you.
Most small towns in the county do not contract there for the residents.
Right, are not allowed to use the library district.
The church, someone for capita, maybe.
Yeah, because their cities don't contribute for library service.
The city does, check.
Yes.
This is the panel's best, okay. Thank you, Mary. Don't want to mistake any more property tax assessments. Do you have anything further, Anne?
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Amanda.
Thank you.
That's your presentation. Very much.
Do, yeah, I'll motion for the contribution.
Pardon?
Any motion?
Oh. What's the last three digits on that seller?
It's 651005 and 50 cents.
651, all right. I will make that a motion to, good, our fiscal year 23 budgets, 151,000, $5.50.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, but it's for Dubuque County Library, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Is your office in Anther?
Yes. Yeah, all of our staff. We have clerks who are based out of each of their branches. So our Holy Cross clerk really only works at Holy Cross, but all of our staff who are not just clerks, their offices are in Asbury.
Stella, you have any earlier?
That would be all for today. We will be back with budget again. Um, next week, we'll be actually wrapping up budget. So, well, I shouldn't say wrapping up budget, but wrapping up um, these intensive work sessions. Yes, so Monday, um, we'll be back at 1 o'clock um, for another afternoon of a couple of presentations. And then um, we'll be talking comp board and general wage discussion.
Thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you, Anne. Thank you, Jay. Welcome, Mr. Harley.